Okay. Power up. Too hot now? So. So. Here we go, red. We all freed up? Yep? Okay. Yeah, my mic's on. Everybody's mic on? Yep? We're good? We recording? Excellent. Uh, okay. This is the regularly scheduled Town and Nantucket Board of Appeals meeting for Thursday, November thirteenth, two thousand and fourteen. And I get an approval of the agenda as may be modified, or what's in front of us?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, at least makes the motion to approve the agenda's written? I'll second. Any further discussion? No. All is in favor, aye. Aye. Okay, approval of the minutes of October ninth, two thousand and fourteen. I wasn't here, but others were, so. If anybody wants to comment, or...
I'll make the motion.
Motion to approve is written, Mark?
Yeah.
All right.
I'll second.
Caram seconds. Any further discussion? No. All is in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, the first order of old business is thirty-seven fourteen, Nantucket Island Land Bank. As owner and Lynn G. Silverman, et al., as the appellant, for applicant, appellant. So, for the, uh, appellant, please. Go ahead. Okay, so Caram's not sitting on it, so it's the five of us. Okay. Good deal.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, my name's Andrew Sutton. I'm an attorney on behalf of the appellant, with an address of seven New England Executive Park, Burlington, Massachusetts. I've come before you today. My client has asked that I request another continuance due to the ongoing settlement negotiations with the land bank. It's my understanding that due to the exclusion of lawyers from the process of the settlement negotiation, the communications have been between my client and Eric Zavetsky as director of the land bank, and that Eric would then bring the negotiations to the board at their monthly meeting. So I know that even though a period of time has elapsed, and this has been continued several times, in part to absent, due to absences on the board, we would request again a continuance because my client believes that they are close to an agreement, and that during the last few weeks, I guess Eric has been out of pocket. He's on vacation, and my client would like the opportunity to speak with Eric, since it is my client's belief that they are in substantial agreement on a number of points, and that it is an issue of form versus substance at this time. I think that a continuance is warranted. I think that it's beneficial to the board for this to be withdrawn, as opposed to decided upon. And I think that in the event an agreement is not reached during the next two months, you could get a letter from, or an interpretation from town council that responds to the memo that I submitted earlier this week regarding the municipal issues, so that you could have a fully informed decision of that matter, because I don't believe that you have adequate facts before you at this time to really make that determination. So, on those bases, we think that it makes sense to request a continuance, and we hope that the board agrees.
Uh, thank you. Any questions from the board on the note? Okay, sir. Initially, on the continuance idea? No?
Not yet.
Okay. Go ahead. For the record.
Thank you. For the record, Attorney Eric Reed, representing the land bank. We vigorously oppose any continuance on this matter, and request that it go forward at today's meeting. In fact, the status of negotiations is that there is no pending negotiation. The land bank commission, after meeting with me several weeks ago, the meeting at which Eric Zavetsky was present before he left on vacation, voted unanimously not to proceed with settlement discussions on this matter. We feel that it would be irresponsible for the land bank as a public entity to be entering into any settlement that would provide a limitation upon its ownership of the, uh, of the subject property. This is just one more attempt by the, uh, appellants to delay and interfere with the public process as far as this property is concerned. Just to go back on this, sometime since this was discussed, seventy Skonset families have contributed or pledged money to the land bank to enable the construction of this improved playground for the use of the children of the community. The, uh, appellant has appealed from the Conservation Commission's decision approving the project. That appeal was, first of all, to the Superior Court under the local bylaw. The Superior Court on motions brought by our litigation counsel and by the town determined that the, uh, appellants had no standing to pursue such an appeal. They've now appealed that to the appeals court. The appeal to the conservation, of a Conservation Commission decision approving the project to the DEP has resulted in a superseding order being issued by the DEP confirming the approval of it by the Conservation Commission. That's now been appealed by them on an administrative appeal within the DEP. This application, or this request to Marcus for a ruling that was commenced by the appellants here, was done for the purpose of delaying the DEP process by a misreading of the rules of the DEP that they considered would result in the, in the matter not being able to proceed before the DEP if local approvals hadn't been obtained. That, uh, ruling was contrary to them as made by Marcus. I'm not even sure that that constitutes an action by a local official that would result in there being the possibility for an appeal, nor am I sure that the appellants have standing to pursue that. But in any event, that decision by Marcus is what is before you here now. At the last meeting where this was discussed, which was July, I believe, you asked for an opinion from your council, town council, who would after all be the party, the attorney who would be representing the Board of Appeals in the event of any appeal being taken from your decision. And he gave you back in August a very detailed opinion setting forth that the, um, proposed activity is exempt from zoning, the requirement for a special permit for recreational use on the basis that it is a municipal use. That, uh, that ruling was given to you in August. I know that Mr. Sutton's response to that was submitted only a few days ago, but he's had since August to submit it if he wanted to. We request that this matter go forward today, and we strongly suggest that you should follow and adopt the opinion provided to you by your council determining that the subject project is exempt from the requirement for a special permit on the basis that it's a municipal use. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if I may respond, the appellant is highly offended at Mr. Reed's insinuations that we are abusing process to delay this project. We are well within our rights, and we are focused on the issue that's before you. The issue as to whether or not you should overturn a determination that this is the preservation of a lot in its natural condition, and thus that a park is a preservation of a lot in its natural condition, and that a playground as accessory to that, including a gazebo, is preservation of a lot in its natural condition. Let me remind you that this is a legal issue, not a political issue. This board is appointed so that it can be immune from political issues, such as numerous letters in support when it comes to a legal issue such as this, interpreting the language of your own bylaw. The fact of the other appeals that are ongoing do not bear on the determination at hand. They do not benefit or take away from the impact of your determination as to this particular zoning enforcement officer's decision, and how that impacts Nantucket. So that's also not relevant to your determination here. With respect to our response, I do want to remind you that, as an attorney, I am an agent for my client, and my client, in the process of negotiating, did not authorize me to go ahead and send a response. So I was waiting on my client to do that. The response came, and after we requested a continuance on Friday and were informed that you would like me to come down here, on the basis that we might move forward, I submitted my reply so that you would have that information. And also, perhaps with that information, would encourage you to, to adopt a continuance so that town council would have time to reply. There is clearly, clearly some confusion about the status of the settlement negotiation. I've seen some of the communications from the land bank, and it is not clear from Eric's communications to my client that we have reached an impasse. It seems, and I'm not able to disclose the details of the agreement, because we have agreed to keep those details confidential per request of the land bank, but it seems like something can happen here. Now, in terms of the interpretations and what's being asked of you, on the one hand, we're asking you to simply enforce the language of your bylaw by overturning a determination that's clearly incorrect, that this playground is clearly not the preservation of a lot in its natural condition. We discussed that at length at our July meeting. Even town council, in his letter, urges you not to adopt that position. Now there has been a effort to continue to distort the bylaw, to push the bylaw in a direction that, that it doesn't go, to allow this, to allow this playground to go in unfettered. Your determination here, even if you found in favor of everything that we were asking for, does not kill the playground. You don't stop the playground. So, really, it is our position that the land bank is, is, is trying to force your hand on that. They're trying to force you make, to make decisions which increase the ambiguity of the interpretation of the bylaw, which increase the likelihood of, of, of presidential issues coming before you in the future. We're simply saying, look, we think there can be an agreement. We should hold back. If there isn't an agreement, you need more information. I think that's really clear from my letter. If you want to go into the, into the municipal issues, and why that's right or wrong, we can do that, but I think that...
Well, let's wait on that.
But I think that a continuance is warranted so that you can have enough information, and we can clarify whether this is going to settle or not.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would, as to the question of whether it is going to settle or not, there are two members of the land bank commission here today, including the chairman, and they can corroborate what I said, that there's a unanimous vote of, of the elected land bank commissioners not to proceed with the settlement, uh, proposals that have been made.
I'm happy with, uh, this characterization that is unanimous. I don't think they need to reiterate that. I mean, is everyone comfortable that the land bank was unanimous in their decision not to move forward? Or do we want to hear from...
I'm sure that that's, that's true.
That's the case.
A few things that, when it came out, that I had heard in the answers too, about policing, the site, and a few other things about the expansion of those, whatever it is. The reason of the expansion, showing that we open one side, and things like, that may not be an issue, but the town council, it's comprised of two towns.
Only if we agree that the land bank is for municipal use, which, you know, frankly, I have a problem with. Because I, only, I have a problem with, because I don't think we're necessarily qualified to make a determination based on that, but, uh... And I, I think the hope was that the two parties might get together and spare further appeals to further courts and et cetera. We're certainly hearing from one side that that's not going to happen, and if they've dug their heels in and are unwilling... Why don't, why don't we hear from the land bank commissioners as to whether or not they have any interest in furthering the discussion regarding some settlement issues?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Alan Reinhardt, chairman of the Nantucket Islands Land Bank Commission. It's hard to know where to start with this, because this all started as a very innocent project to develop a playground in Skonset where there is no existing facility. As far as the negotiations that have been referred to here, the land bank has discussed at length the situation. We did authorize Eric Zavetsky, our executive director, to speak with Mr. Silverman to see if there was any possible resolution. Every, and by the way, these were all on telephone. If there was email, it was, well, I'm, uh, so most of these conversations were over the telephone. Director Zavetsky came back to the commission. We talked about it, and we voted unanimously that we were making no progress, mainly because every, every insistence on the part of the appellant was to demand that they have a say in the land bank's operation of, or what we do with this property. And they were originally requesting a hundred years. They did narrow it down to thirty years. We felt, we, the land bank commission, felt that having, but giving authority to a neighbor to dictate what we can and can't do on our property is something that we just cannot tolerate. So at that point, we told Eric Zavetsky, no more negotiations. Let's go forward with the appeal.
Okay, so it's your position, if I'm hearing you correctly, you're not interested in speaking to the appellant about this any longer?
We feel that we have come to the end of the line in terms of the discussions. We have been discussing this with the Silvermans for, I would say, over a year now, and it has become very clear to us that the effort on the part of the appellant is simply not to have the park there. So, in our mind, there is no further opportunity or no further need for negotiations, or we feel that there is no possibility for resolution with negotiation with the complaint.
Okay. Thank you.
If, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I'm somewhat troubled by the land bank's characterization of the settlement agreement, and being bound by the confidentiality that we agreed to, it's very difficult for me to rebut this in a public forum, since they specifically asked us to agree not to report to the zoning board of appeals, and also stated in an email from their counsel that it was their position that they were not asked by the zoning board of appeals to settle, or, and that they were not required to provide any information to the zoning board of appeals, as Mr. O'Mara has reiterated. My understanding of my client's position, and that certainly is not limited to the Silvermans, but all of the abutters who are a party to this, is that they are incredibly flexible to reaching a resolution here. They have absolutely bent over backwards to, to negotiate this. Certainly, originally, when, in any negotiation process, you, you start from a larger number and work your way to a smaller number, and it's our understanding that in numerous email communications between my client and Eric, which I have and can't show you because of the confidentiality, there was some agreement that came down to a specific number of points that they did agree upon, and it was not communicated to us that, that there was this impasse. We were not allowed to respond to it, and we feel a bit blindsided by this. And frankly, the inability for lawyers to sit down, or for us to even appear before the commission to discuss this, has made it very difficult to move forward with the settlement. They deliberated on this in executive session, so we were, it's impossible for us to monitor what was said. We were not invited to appear before them. Lawyers were prohibited from being involved in, in any of the discussions. We really think that if, if you just got everybody together in a room with, you know, two lawyers, representative of each party, that this would, this would get done. But if the land bank's position is that they don't want to move forward at all, that's fine, but it's inappropriate to mischaracterize this as being the sluggishness of the abutters, because that's anything but true.
Fair enough. Questions? Concerns? Thoughts?
Well, is anyone concerned, to my knowledge, we haven't tried many, with rules, hours, who's going to pay for water, who's going to clean water, what time you call closes the night, what do you ask them to, see if the police was monitored, and put it inviting, if there was a monitor that the park might? Do we have any of that?
Certainly not that I've seen.
No. If, if I may, that would only come in play if we were proceeding for an approval from, from the Board of Appeals. We're not proceeding. We haven't applied for a special permit, and we don't believe that, in fact, we are quite certain, based upon our own analysis, and that of your council, town council, that we do not need to apply for a special permit in connection with this.
And so arguably, we can't impose any conditions in, in the present form. I mean, arguably, we're looking at the narrow issue of Marcus's letter, and his determination, or opinion, or whatever the, yeah, the determination that the park is in a, an appropriate use consistent with the preservation of a lot in its natural condition. I mean, the municipal use issue, the hours, this, that, and the other thing, I mean, arguably, are not on the table. I would submit...
Municipal use, maybe. Yeah, I would, I would submit that it is. The question is not whether Marcus, in his letter, that determined that a special permit was not required, was citing the right ground for that. The fact is that what is before you is whether or not his ruling that the matter does not require a special permit for a recreational use is correct. As I said before, I'm not even sure that this issue is properly before you in the absence of an application. I'm not sure that a, uh, a letter opinion from him in this situation is appropriate or appealable, but in any event, assuming that it is, the question is whether he is correct that it does not require a special permit as a recreational use.
Well, but he's making the determination based, if I'm reading this correctly, based on the fact that the preservation of a lot in its natural condition is allowed in, in all zoning districts. Correspondingly, a park is a use determined, I mean, appropriately determined to be consistent with the preservation of a lot in its natural condition. I mean, so he's made a determination that a park is consistent with preservation of a na, of a lot in its natural condition. So that seems to be the, the nub of the issue here for us to determine, whether or not we agree with Marcus, that the lot in its natural condition is the same as a park, with a gazebo, a makeshift, a slide...
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I, I think that, I'm troubled by my brother counsel's various arguments here. On the one hand, he asks you to take a very narrow approach and say that the land bank is municipal and thus has a nexus with the town of Nantucket, and is entitled to all of the municipal exemptions that the town would be entitled to, and then on the other hand, saying that, well, the decision that you need to make is a broad decision, that just simply a special permit isn't necessary, and that it's allowed by some other means. I, I don't think that's right. I think that what's before you is the question of whether it's the preservation of a lot in its natural condition. I think Marcus correctly interpreted that he should not make a decision on the municipal issue. I think that it is correct that you should also not make a decision on the municipal issue. I think that based on the case law that's relegated to the court, the, the land bank can go to the court, get a determination of their municipal status, bring that to Marcus, and he can determine whether or not, based on the court's determination of their status, that the municipal exemption applies to them. That's another avenue for, for this to go. I think that you can clearly reject Marcus's position, I don't think that there's anything before you, to support that this is the preservation of a lot in its natural condition, and that's what's proposed. I think that leads to a distortion of the bylaw. I think that it leads to that slippery slope, as we discussed, and, and if you don't want to grant a continuance, I suggest that you simply vote to overturn Marcus's determination, not make a decision on the municipal issue, and then we'll move forward from there.
Right.
If I may, at the request of all, during the July meeting, town council, as you requested, received, paid for, that letter's been submitted, you've all read it, you have refuted it. The letter that town council submitted amended with Marcus's condition, and Marcus appeared in Congress and confirmed that he was in agreement with that. Would you see in your staff report, and if you want to read the letters in the packet, to ask, as town council recommended, the board make a motion to overturn the appeal, uphold the firm's views, the determination, and the modification, as to, with, with not, the disreported preservation of a lot in the staff of the commission, town council, came with a combination that was an incorrect evaluation of the procedure, and rather determined that this was a municipal status presentation.
Ms. Antoni, I appreciate your input, but that's why I asked for a continuance, so that town council could refute me directly, if he's so pleased.
I'm comfortable with not dealing with the municipal issue unless everybody else on the board wants to get into that. I don't feel qualified in making that. I'm not sure that the town council letter is unequivocal. Yep?
Question. If, if, under the municipal, assuming it isn't municipal use, is that entitled unto the door on this lot, prior to going to the law, so we're discussing?
I think the municipal use allows you to do anything you want.
See, break, break the zone.
Yeah.
You have to be the national department.
You have to be.
But use, in terms of use, you can do those things.
And a lot of them.
And a lot of them.
I think that's too big an opening, and I don't want to drive for a person.
Yeah, I don't think it's, I think that that's something that if the parties end up appealing and going to court, or, I guess, that's arguing some of the drugs out, and I think that, you know, I mean, I, I, we can fol, I mean, we could follow town council's opinion because he is our council, but I think we're opening the door.
I assume town council saw a plant, and proposed...
We don't know, we don't know what, what he saw, but, but I think that if we, if, I don't think, I don't really think we need to take on that. Like, I think that's a, another level that we don't need to take on. I think we can focus on, on Marcus, and then if the parties appeal, and they end up in front of a judge, and they want to have that larger argument, I just, I think, I think there, it needs more, it needs to be discussed and researched more than just a letter from each council saying this is what we believe, like a two-page letter from each. I mean, they both make good points, but there's a lot more.
Well, I could make a point. That's, this is not a matter of a letter from each council. You don't have a letter from me on the point. You have...
I mean, I meant town council.
Town council... Town council, who's your counsel.
Right.
Who you went to for an opinion on the thing.
Right.
After hearing from myself and from Mr. Sutton at the first hearing.
Well, the municipal use thing is all well and good, and we can argue whether or not we agree with town council, whether we feel qualified, but Marcus, in his letter, goes so far as to say he's not, he's not ready to utilize that, he doesn't have the information. I just don't feel that that is the issue at hand. The, what Marcus said is, I don't know about the municipal issue, I'm not ready to deal with that, but I am ready to deal with the fact that the park is appropriately determined, is appropriately determined to be consistent with the preservation of a lot in its natural condition. And that appears to me to be the nexus of what we're talking about, not, you know, anything else. And I, we were hopeful that maybe some negotiations would take place, and, you know, and so that, I mean, you were concerned with Michael, could have been ironed out, even though we maybe didn't have purview over them, but sometimes they get thrown into the mix, but that doesn't seem to have happened. And at least one side says they have no interest in it happening. So in the absence of interest, maybe we can come to a vote on the natural condition issue. Or, having said that, we can certainly continue it for a month. I'm not prepared to continue this for, you know, ad nauseam. If one side says absolutely not, I mean, I think the only reason we would consider continuing would be if both sides agree today that there is some hope. But absent that, let's just move on.
I would be willing to agree to a one-month continuance for the sole purpose of enabling, even though I think that Mr. Pucci has set forth his opinion on your behalf very clearly, to give him an opportunity to respond to Mr. Sutton if it comes down just to that one point.
The municipal use point?
Municipal use is the only issue here.
Well, I don't agree with you, not the way that Marcus.
Per town couns, Marcus, Marcus, the substance of Marcus's determination, the result of his determination, is that no special permit would be required. We haven't applied for a special permit. We have no intention of applying for a special permit. He has ruled that no special permit is required. The opinion that you obtained from town council said that that conclusion was right for possibly the wrong reason. In any event, I'm willing to agree to a one-month continuance on that one, on that one point to enable you to obtain a further opinion, which I assume will corroborate the opinion that he's already given you, as your counsel, from Mr. Pucci.
Mr. Chairman, if you recall the July meeting, the municipal issue was raised by Attorney Reed. It was never really Marcus's issue. It was brought to Marcus's attention in a letter from Attorney Reed in response to our request to, for an interpretation to determine that a special permit was indeed necessary for this use because the bylaw doesn't support a different interpretation. There's just nothing in the bylaw for a playground of this type. And indeed, it makes sense that it's not in the bylaw because every single other playground on Nantucket has been created by the town of Nantucket itself. And so there's not really any mechanism in the bylaw to say, hey, anybody who wants to go out, who's a private landowner, go ahead and build a playground. That's the preservation of a lot in its natural condition, regardless of the density of the playground. I think if you look at the number of the play structures on this lot and compare it to the number of the play structures on any other playground in Nantucket, you'll see that it's much more intense, because even if you go to the elementary school, there's like seven play structures on a much bigger playground. So we're running into an issue where the bylaw really just doesn't say anything relevant to this. And indeed, if you look at the enabling legislation for the land bank, which I don't want you to do, because I don't, it's consistent with the position that it's not municipal, right? Because you're not supposed to make that interpretation. It's Massachusetts legislation, not Nantucket legislation. But the enabling legislation says that the land bank can build, quote unquote, recreational facilities. And that's language that came from town meetings, home rule petition to the state. And that in and of itself is consistent with recreational facility in the bylaw. This is where this came from. We didn't invent recreational facility. It says the land bank can build recreational facilities. And this is what that would fall into if they're allowed to do it by their own enabling legislation. So Marcus was focused, again, on how that works. And his determination is specifically tied to a broad exemption. So I think Ms. McCarthy certainly recognized that the interpretation that this is municipal is an extremely broad grant of power. The determination that this is a preservation of a lot in its natural condition is also an extremely broad grant of power and in fact, an exemption in its own right from zoning. So there's nothing before you that's been submitted that supports that interpretation. It's just Marcus basically saying, because I said so. Just the same as your town council's letter doesn't provide an analysis. And again, the municipal issue, I don't think you should consider it. I think that my letter adequately states a number of reasons why you shouldn't consider it. But I also think that there's a third-party issue, because even if it's deemed that the land bank is municipal, it certainly doesn't dispose of the third-party issue as to the question of whether or not an independent state entity is allowed to have your municipal exemption, because it is clearly not the town of Nantucket. And to just wholly grant the land bank the same exemption that the town of Nantucket enjoys under the municipal use exemption, it's a double jump. It's just not there.
Thank you. From the audience.
Neil Patterson, Nantucket Land Bank. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Board of Appeals. I'd just like to speak to, we are an elected board of officials who oversee public land for the use of the public, for recreation, for everything else. I'm not going to talk about municipalities or anything else. We, this is becoming, in my mind only, and I speak for myself, to be a watershed case. It's about public rights and public land. To me, it's that simple. We've tried to negotiate. I'm not going to talk about the negotiations, but it's pretty unusual for us to be unanimous. I will say that. I would respectfully ask for a vote today, because that, my own personal feeling is that that would be some kind of progress. Thank you very much.
I have a question, if, not to you, Neil. If indeed, the board was inclined to overturn Marcus's interpretation, what would the next step, in your opinion, be for the land bank to get a park or whatever this is here?
Well, I think that raises the question of whether you're ready to take the step to say that it's a recreational facility that's being proposed here and that the special permit process is appropriate so that items that the town itself would consider, such as the issues that Mr. Omara raised about the safety and the traffic and the parking that he wanted the land bank to reflect, to bring back to him, be dealt with in a public forum? Because at the historical district level, those haven't been vetted. At the, at the DEP, those haven't been vetted. That's conservation. So really, the idea is that it's not the town of Nantucket, it's a developer in this instance. And that's why we think a special permit, a special permit process would be appropriate here, indeed based on the language of recreational facility in the enabling legislation. So if you overturn the decision and made a determination that a special permit was necessary, it would simply go to the planning board. And that doesn't mean that the project is dead. It just means that it's reviewed by people like yourselves who have the interest of the town at heart. And then from there, it moves forward. It's not a huge, huge issue to send this to the planning board and let them make the decision. Now, an alternative, if you don't feel like reaching that point, would be to overturn, and then the land bank can go gather the information that's necessary to show that it's municipal, bring that to Marcus. Marcus can make a determination of whether that qualifies them for the municipal exemption, and then maybe it ends up back here.
Okay. Well, I'm, first of all, obviously, any determination that would overturn Marcus's decision, it goes without saying, that's going to be appealed by us. I'm deeply offended by Mr. Sutton's description of the land bank as a developer. We're dealing with an elected public body that, as Mr. Patterson said, holds its land for the benefit of the public. This is, and the various suggestions about what other people might do on the island, on private land, by way of creating a playground, are completely inapposite. This is a public body, a public elected body, with statutory responsibilities toward the people of Nantucket. Thank you.
Thank you. What do we think?
Do you agree with Marcus's letter?
Marcus's letter, yeah. That seems to be the crux of what we're talking about. And then whether or not it then has to go to another body or somehow back here, and maybe Michael's questions are.
For another time.
But for, it certainly doesn't seem like a continuance for, I never saw a hand go up, yes, we'll discuss this. Arthur, Ms. Vi, I mean, he would continue only for one very specific point. I don't really see that we need to continue, unless we'd like to see everybody again in a month, but, you know.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I'm just curious though. So the letter from Marcus's opinion came out because Mr. Sutton's clients asked for determination. And so then, which has correctly been wrong, so then, and then it came, so then you guys, the land bank got this opinion that you didn't need to go forward with a special permit because it was the preservation of the lot in its natural condition. But if your enabling act, so if that hadn't happened, like what was the plan going forward anyway? If the enabling act gives the land bank the power, the permission, the ability to build recreational facilities, which I believe playground falls under, you have that ability. If this doesn't work out on, you know, on this track that you're on, doesn't the land bank have the power to move forward with this project anyway, regardless of the neighbors? I mean, the neighbors may, you know, come back and want to prolong it or put their opinions in, but it seems to me the land bank is still able to do this, maybe not, you know, completely unfettered because it wouldn't be under the municipal exemption or the preservation of a lot in its natural condition, but just under the powers that the land bank has anyway.
That raises a further question of law, which is, insofar as the suggestion has been made that the land bank, which is certainly not private, may have more characteristics as a state agency than as a local agency. But in most cases, I mean, that doesn't really benefit the appellant, because in most cases, state agencies performing essential governmental functions, which the land bank's purposes are expressly in their statute called out as, is in most cases exempt from municipal zoning in any event. It's certainly our position that we would be able to proceed, go forward. If this issue hadn't come up as a result of the appellant's asking Marcus for an opinion, we wouldn't have been before the Board of Appeals, we wouldn't have come in here at all. We've been before the HDC. We have HDC approval for the project. We have Conservation Commission approval, which has been appealed from, but all the appeals have, so far, have been going our way. And in any event, we would be proceeding to go forward with the construction of the project without applying for anything. Now, as a result of this situation having come forward with the request for the ruling from Marcus, and now the appeal to you in which you have to determine whether or not to sustain his position, that then would result in a decision being entered that we couldn't ignore. We would, we would have to appeal from if it were contrary to the land bank's position on the matter. But if this had never been raised, right, there would never have been the need for a special permit.
I have a question for, I guess, both of you. Why, why, I mean, is a third avenue or another avenue, we just don't act on this, just because Marcus, there was no application made to Marcus for this park yet. You simply asked him ahead of time hypothetically, you know, what's your thought here? He renders a, not a decision, but just, well, yeah, an opinion about what a park is and whether it's a natural use, et cetera, condition. I don't even see why this is something we need to be dealing with in my insight.
No, I feel like, I feel like this is like a Pandora's box that was opened by your clients and now has given the land bank something that, I agree, if there's the possibility of you guys getting a determination that you have the freedoms of a municipal use exemption, that's great for you. But I don't know that we're the ones who make that, I don't, I don't know that we're the ones making it. And I sort of, I agree with you, like, this sort of came about as you were asking for an opinion, and it sort of snowballed into this.
Just maybe to give you sort of a heads up, okay? Yeah, he's going to, of course, so then we'll appeal, but I don't even understand why this is before us, Ellen.
I agree with you. I agree with you.
Let me hear from Ellen, or, I appreciate it.
Before you can make files, repeal.
Well, but what, what did they appeal? They appeal, they appeal Marcus's letter. I mean, if Marcus.
It's not a violation.
It's definitely unusual, but if they file an application.
Well, but we, so we could sit here arguably and say, we do not believe this needs to be before us. That's our vote.
I mean, there's no, there is no violation, right?
Yeah, there's no violation. There's, I don't understand what the heck you're appealing.
The appeal is allowed under your bylaws. You can appeal any determination of the zoning enforcement officer. Obviously, determination is not defined, and we'd have to go through statutory construction. I think you'll find that although atypical, this type of determination is appealable. I also think that, I think that it's clearly been identified that it's not correct. If you don't take any action, it stands. This is how Marcus makes this determination in Nantucket, and he'll make it consistently. It's not correct, and I think that it needs to be overturned. I don't think that there's any prejudice to the land bank for overturning it, especially if they want to make the argument that they're exempt from zoning and any control by the town of Nantucket, which I think that it is very curious that they're bringing up at the 11th hour. Why would they go through this process? Why would they argue that they're municipal? Why would they argue for other avenues of exemption if they really believe that they weren't subject to zoning? What they should have said is, hey, Nantucket, guess what? We don't have to do anything that you want to tell us to do, which is the crux of the municipal issue. Nantucket does not control the land bank. It's a state instrumentality. But there is language in the, in the enabling legislation for the land bank that suggests that in certain instances, in an instance of when they're going to construct a recreational facility or change the surface of the property, that that's subject to zoning. And that's an issue for a court to decide.
I agree with you in the end part, but they did go to the HDC, they did go to the Conservation Commission, he said they'd have to go to the planning board. So, and Marcus's letter here says that, it appears that your question was whether the proposed use of the property constitutes municipal use. He says here he does not have enough information in order to make that determination. And then he goes on to say he doesn't believe that such a determination is necessary in this, is it? So he, you're saying that he's making a determination, but he's making it, it's in the negative. He's saying he doesn't have, he goes on to explain his feelings about a park, but it's, it doesn't appear to me that he's, he's not making a determination about the municipal use, which was the question at hand. And no action has been taken where he has acted on this, his further explanation of the preservation of a lot in the natural condition. So again, I get that you guys have made an appeal, but I'm not sure, I mean, you're appealing his opinion, but he hasn't, there hasn't been any action taken on it, so until there's a special permit or they start construction and they have a zoning violation or they do something, and then Marcus steps in and says you have to stop because of X, I don't...
I mean, arguably, his letter could have stopped at, however, I do not believe such a determination is necessary at that time.
And that seems like that's what you were asking for.
Miss, members of the board, let me clarify. We did not ask for a determination on municipal. We asked that Marcus require that when they do apply for a permit, that it's We asked that Marcus require that when they do apply for a permit, that it's correct that they apply for a special permit. He said, I do not believe they need a special permit because it is the preservation of a lot in its natural condition. Arthur Reed, when he was copied on our letter, submitted a statement to Marcus that Marcus considered contemporaneously with our request for a determination that suggested that this was municipal. The response that you're seeing is partially in reaction to Arthur Reed's statement that this is municipal, and to our request for a determination of, of what this is, what this requires. The zoning bylaw allows us to do this, and it provides that it's an appealable decision. And, and, and that's, that's what you, where you come to. So, so this is, this is a decision that's on file with the town. It's a decision that if the, if the land bank, if it's left in place, and the land bank went ahead, they could get a permit on the basis of it simply being a natural condition. And, again, we've asked you to make the determination that it requires a special permit because it's a recreational facility, so it goes beyond that. This is, this is a request for an interpretation from you. This is a request for overturning Marcus. These are allowed under the zoning bylaw.
Okay, let, let's assume that, Ellen...
I wish Marcus was here to...
I'm just trying to clarify as to why you ended up in the report. In, in bylaw, number 929, section 29, you, okay, you have powers to hear about, just that, you have powers to hear inside the field from decisions that are done by the zoning enforcement officer. I'm not sure if the word is used, but what, this was a request, combination, flash interpretation. So, you can parse as much as you want, that's just, you know, that is perhaps the bylaw that you would, you know, tightening, or maybe, you know, in fact...
Okay, let, let's assume that you think you can, should be here, the staff assumed, I mean, made the decision that you should be here. So, what, I'm, I'm good with they're here, let's make some sort of determination, because I think we should move on relatively soon. I think we've made our position, oh, you know. You got an opinion, Ms. Ramirez, or, or Ellen, your statement?
I'm looking for somebody here. Okay. No, she won't.
So, on the, I, I guess, again, in my, my opinion, what we're looking at is the narrow notion of, because this appears to be what you've appealed, whether the park is a use appropriately determined to be consistent with the preservation of the lot in its natural condition. And then the whole municipal use thing can come out at a later date with some other, and it sounds to me like the worst-case scenario, or, not even, that, that the land bank, no, it doesn't matter what the next step is, but who knows what the next step is.
So, if we, if we focus only on that, a park is a use, so what's...
I mean, is a park a natural condition?
A park versus a playground.
Right, right, so then I guess it is, like, what's the definition of a park? Because if we just, if park equals playground, you know, but it doesn't, because Marcus is saying park is a use appropriately determined to be consistent, playground equipment is appropriately determined to be accessory to the use of the park.
Because there's parks that are just parks, you know, vegetation, couple benches, versus having gazebo's and structures.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I, I remind you that in the letter that I submitted regarding the natural condition issue, we had to turn outside of the bylaw for statute interpretation, statutory interpretation due to the lack of guidance in the bylaw, and that natural condition is, is generally accepted to be defined as land without man-made interference. And, you know, Marcus said, well, it doesn't have to be glacial, and certainly it's not glacial, but I think that it's fair to say that this is a stretch.
But, but, I mean, man-made interference, again, so then what's the definition of that? Because most parks will have at least a couple of benches, or a water fountain, or even a thing where you can, you know, like, the thing you run through, and there's different exercise stops, or signs that have indicating flora and fauna, like, there's, there's always...
Or paths.
Yeah, like, there's always man-made...
If I may, I, I would, I would suggest that you can see what natural condition is on Nantucket as you drive through the island. I think natural condition is really, is obvious. It's natural condition, it's not man-made interference. You know what a beach looks like when it's been combed and has been refilled with sand? You know what a beach looks like when it's left to natural erosion? You know what a lot looks like when it's left to grow on its own? And you know what a lot looks like when it's been plowed over, or, has been turned into grass with soccer fields and, and other things. All those things could be called a park. But, in this instance, where it's the natural condition of the land, that's the intent of the bylaw to protect, I think that's pretty explicit. I think on Nantucket, we know what natural condition of the land is.
Then why would you even have a bylaw that allows you to keep that, because...
You can do that.
You can do that anyway. I mean, why, why would you need a law to keep that, the natural condition?
First, it says consistent with the preservation of the lot in its natural condition. It doesn't say it has to be its natural condition. So, I don't think we're going back to glacial times, or, you know, the grasslands, or anything else that, in the history of Nantucket.
I mean, Children's Beach is definitely a park, and it has a gazebo, it has benches, it has trash cans, it has playgrounds, it has the little place where you buy food, but it's still a park.
It's not consistent with the preservation of a lot in its natural condition. Children's Beach has buildings and...
All right, well, again, let me hear from the audience again, please. Just identify, just off the tape, please.
This is Julie Jordan, and I'm the designer of the park, and I would like to point out that the park is an old building lot, full of invasive species. They, the only thing they did was fill in the old foundation and plowed slinks back there. It is not in its natural condition, this is not made of species, this is bird habitat only by the nature of the pasture, it is left fallow. It has been developed before, there was a house there, and I'd like to clarify, it's not in its natural condition as it sits now. It will be more in its natural condition with native species planted in children's play, than it is as it sits today.
Mr. Chairman, if the, if the park is fallow, it's fallow because the land bank has allowed it to become fallow over the past 15 years. All of the species that are there were pursuant to the original order of conditions for the construction of the existing playgrounds. So, you, you know, it's, you can't have it both ways, really. It's...
All right.
So, the other option for us is to what? Overturn, or, it's not even overturned, because I don't even think this is a decision, but disregard or disagree with Marcus's opinion, and say that the land bank already has the ability through its enabling act to pursue this recreational facility, and they should pursue it through the, the channels that are available to them?
Well, I, I don't know if we need to go so far as to say that, but that would be the inference.
Because then at that point, Arthur and his clients can decide whether they want to appeal what we've said, and take it higher to, to get that determination made and flushed out about the municipal use. And then, and then either do a special permit or not, or whatever, but, I just, I don't...
Yeah, I don't think we're, you know, by, by a vote, foreclosing the possibility to do...
Right. I mean, I guess what I'm saying is, I don't think we need to necessarily define what a park is, what consistent with the preservation of a lot in its natural condition is, or what natural condition is, or what playground equipment is. I think we can just say, we can just, that's an option for us, right? Is just to say we're, we're not in agreement with Marcus?
Yep.
Or it's unclear, and so we're not going to support it, and then let the parties take the next step to get to where they want to be. Because I don't think, I haven't heard from anyone on the board that any, and maybe I'm, maybe I haven't, just haven't been listening, but I haven't heard anyone on the board say that they're willing to make a determination, or comfortable with making a determination about municipal use, and that seems to be what the parties want, and I, I certainly am not comfortable to do that.
No, I think we're pretty clear on that, so, that, that can be bought in another venue.
So, how would that motion look, to do what I just suggested? What would the wording be to, because it's not a determination, and we're just not, we're just not, we wouldn't be willing to second Marcus's opinion? I mean, I, I mean...
With due respect, I think that the thing that's before you is to either, very simply, you either sustain, you don't necessarily have to determine all the issues related to the property. You either sustain or not sustain Marcus's action. That's, that's what you've been asked to do.
Right, but by doing that, we're...
No, we sustain the, the appellant's action, or overturn, we're not, we're not talking about Marcus's action, Marcus didn't really take an action.
Oh, yes, you are, because they're, they're, they're saying that Marcus took an action, and they're asking you to, to overrule it.
But just because they're saying that Marcus took an action, doesn't mean he did. I mean, I, reading the letter, I don't, I don't think Marcus did take an action.
I don't either.
I think if we do simply, if we just sustain what he said, then we are making determinations about a park as a use consistent with the preservation of a lot in its natural condition, all of those things, because we would be saying what the land bank is doing are these things. I just don't know that we're comfortable with, or I'm not comfortable to do all that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think we've simply asked you to overturn Marcus's letter, his determination. If, if you want to call it a determination, or not call it a determination, or if it's ripe or not ripe, those are all appealable questions. I don't think you necessarily have to deal with those. We've simply just asked you to overturn Marcus's letter, and then we've asked you to make an additional finding that it's subject to a special permit, which you can decide on as well.
I don't see that in here. The appellant brings an appeal pursuant to Nantucket blah, 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 requests that the DVA overturn the interpretation, determination of the CEO, doesn't say anything about the special permit.
In my letter, in the, in the last paragraph, I believe.
But your, it has to be with the application.
Right, I mean, but we're not, I don't...
It's appendix to the application.
I think that the next step is whatever you want to take, or they take. I mean, I don't, I don't know that we need to dictate, or want to dictate, the next step, do we?
Well, if you don't pay any, if they argue the municipal use, they don't need a special permit.
Right, as Arthur said, if we, if they, they don't have to come before us, so it's not asked earlier.
You do have to act on their appeal. That's the one thing that, that Mr. Sutton and I are agreeing upon. You're, you're, you're being asked to overturn the decision, the, the, whatever you call it, the decision, letter, opinion, the action taken by Mr. Silverstein. And you need to take a vote on that, and, like other matters before the Board of Appeals, it requires a supermajority in order to overturn.
Again, I, I don't see anything about the special permit, and, and I'm, I'm obviously skimming through your letter, but in your conclusion, if this is the one that you refer to, reasons set forth herein, interpretation is correct, the zoning bylaw does not provide the project is analogous to the preservation of a lot in its natural condition, according to the Board, should overrule the interpretation that determines the project is a recreational facility under the zoning bylaw. I mean, I'm comfortable dealing with this one very narrow issue, and then...
Letting them decide on it.
Letting everybody else decide what the next step is. So, Susan, you, you've virtually crafted a motion.
So, we do it in the, when it's, when it's, when it's Marcus's sentence, we make the new permit, right?
Uh, yeah, works for me.
So, I'd make a motion that we would, we would overturn Marcus's...
Uh, right, yeah.
Interpretation and decision? And that would be, that would be...
Well, aren't we making the motion based on the, the applicant's appeal of Marcus's determination? So, we're either, you know, overturning the appeal, which means we agree with Marcus's determination, I guess?
Right.
Or, we are upholding the appeal. So, I don't...
So, we would... So, we're not going to, so the applicant's asking us to determine that the park is a recreational facility, which we're not going to do, we're just going to, we're just going to uphold the applicant's appeal, and overrule Marcus's interpretation and determination?
In, in the term.
Am I saying that right?
Yeah, we would be sustaining the appeal would be an affirmative vote, which means that, um... Let's just be very clear about that, and Ellen, you're going to need to help us here. What...
Because I, I just...
All we're doing in that regard, if we were to, in my opinion, if we're sustaining the appeal, is we're simply, I guess, it seems like a strong, well, we're overruling Marcus's interpretation.
So, if they're sustaining the appeal, that's fine, what they have to do is to review and overrule what's determined.
That a park is, is an appropriate, or is appropriately determined to be consistent with the preservation of a lot in its natural condition?
And with the language in the letter.
And as such, playground equipment is appropriately determined to be accessory to the use of the park.
You're not saying what you consider being a recreational beach, or anything about the aesthetic, that you have to...
I think that actually what you are being asked to do is to overrule his determination that a special permit is not required for the proposed project.
Well, I think that, that, that seems to be the implication, but it's not, wasn't clear to us that, well, that was the substance of his determination.
So, I'm...
It would have been nice if he mentioned it.
I think that's a secondary request from the applicant, right? So, they're asking us to, one, overrule the interpretation, and two, determine that the project is a recreational facility under zoning bylaw, which again, create a special permit.
That's correct.
Yeah, I think, I think the implication is, you, you have to go get a special permit to do this.
You would only, that would only be the case if you determined it was a recreational facility, and of course, that they weren't...
Which I don't think we need to do, because Marcus didn't go that far, like, right? I think we just, and, I think we just need to focus on, or I think we should just focus on the, the very limited thing that, that Marcus had got.
I'm good with that.
I, I think you're well within your powers to sever the two.
We, we may be, but I don't think we need to.
Correct, I, I think that you only need to make a determination on the narrower issue. I don't, I don't think you need to.
I mean, because the, the land bank can apply on, in some other path...
Right.
...which may or may not require a special permit, and we don't...
And had this opinion, right, and had this opinion not been asked for, the land bank would have just, you guys would have just gone on, done a, you had gone ahead and done it without this whole big discussion about municipal use and all of this.
Yeah, well, Marcus may have determined something else in that application process. He might have said, no, you need a special permit.
Right.
So, let, let's let everyone else get to that determined point.
Right, right. Do you want to... Oh, my God, I don't really know where to...
So, you know, we, the, the affirmative motion, I think, would be, you would be sustaining the appeal regarding the park is a use appropriate, determined to be consistent with the preservation of a lot in its natural condition. I mean, that's really, seems to be the, what we're talking about.
And we're not going to address, we're not going to make a determination about the project as a recreational facility under zoning bylaw, because that's what the land bank can move forward under that, you know?
Right. Is, is everyone, is that a motion?
Sure.
All right, so, is everybody relatively comfortable with that motion, and would somebody like to second it, or do we want to discuss it some more? Mark seconds it. Does anybody want to discuss it anymore? No? Okay, all those in favor say aye to sustain the appeal. In other words, overturn Marcus. Okay? That's what we're voting on, correct? That was your motion? Okay, so we're sustaining the appeal. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Three, all those in, you are aye. All those opposed? Opposed, okay. Thank you.
So you have a four to one vote sustaining the appeal.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, moving on. When you're in charge, you're going to get consent. Why? Okay. Okay. All right, Michael O'Meara has to step out for a moment. I don't know why that... So he's on fifty-three fourteen. So the next one that he's not on is fifty-one fourteen, thirty-four Codfish Park Road. Is Mr. Brescher here? I saw him at one point. Are you ready to go forward?
I have to abstain, obviously, because I'm accused myself.
Right. No, this would be E T L B K K M A and S M, taking seat for G T. That's you.
That's me.
No, no, we're going, if everybody's in agreement, because Mr. O'Meara had to step out for a moment, fifty-one fourteen, Robert Rysken, thirty-four Codfish Park Road. The page number is one eighty-two. Okay. Some fun today. All right, so are we starting? We're good? Everybody? Have they found the page? One eighty-four, eighty-four. He asked. So let's go. If you're ready, John. Okay? Go ahead.
Do you have a new plan?
It's one ninety-two.
Where is the new parking on one ninety-two?
In the bottom.
Oh, yeah, there is parking.
So you originally were showing, when you heard last time, there was a proposed shed in the southerly setback to take that out.
So we can work.
Yeah. That you are going closer to the rear yard lot line now.
Was the bulk of the, the building in, or buildings in the setback before was the shed? The existing shed? But some of that?
None at all.
Some of the house used to be in the setback?
And now how much of the house is sort of remaining in setback?
Now there won't be one.
So we're putting more of the house within the setback? I just have the question, if you're picking the building up and moving it, why don't you just move it outside of the, uh, the northerly setback completely?
I can answer that. For the applicant, the primary reason we're not being able to strip it any further to the south is that we have a variance in place of the subject system, which requires we cannot be any closer than five feet to the trench which is closest to the house. So we've gone right up to that margin of five feet in our shed and can't do anything more. With respect to the proportion in the lefty side, there's a provision in the bylaws that allows for reduction along the way to ten feet to five feet, and that exercise quite often underfoot.
What about the angle of the building mark? It's sort of better, are you parallel with the town?
We're parallel with the trench. We're close to the opposite.
Where is this epic trench marking?
Some of the south boundaries, five feet away from that building.
Shaun, maybe? It's been showing, maybe. I thought it's going to be somewhere. Is it with a retaining wall?
The building will five feet off the trench.
Is that a retaining wall? Oh, no, that's a walk.
That's a walk.
So it's on the opposite side of the walk, or?
Well, everything manicured and red right over, including the proposed shed location of the concierge within the, uh, boundary of the trench there. According to all samples, something maybe came, and we looked at getting it out of the setback, we looked at how we would install it in the trench.
Is this, on your newest plan, Mark, is the, I pretty much think I know the answer. The little red thing next, red markings next to Codfish Park Road, that's an addition?
The colored in areas are the improvement in the setback, which weren't the granite where we're throwing those, we got, you know, from the way. And so red areas are bound to the building to shift.
Yeah, so there are additions that are compliant. Yeah, the red outlines are additions that are compliant.
No, what I'm saying is if this weren't here, the building goes that way and this is out. I don't have a problem with it personally, but the reason it has to shift over here is because of this portion. This is new, right?
Yeah, but what you said is that you can get a five-foot special permit here anyway. I was more questioning this one.
Right.
Whether we're making that better, or making that area better.
You're making this better, but Mark, this area here precludes you from going this, I can't move this because it's a document, from going this way, this, this new portion. Is this new?
You mean from going forward?
Yeah, and then you're outside of this.
There was a hundred, there was a hundred and forty-four square foot shed in that location.
I don't particularly have a issue. I mean, without the way back there, that, and the way is a little weird in terms of its shape and everything else. It's not a heavily trafficked way. If you look at the locus, it's literally just to sort of get the behind, on backside of most of these properties. It doesn't go anywhere per se, so it doesn't give anybody frontage or, I don't think, because all the other ones seem to be on the road, so I don't have a problem with it.
I think, I mean, I think the bigger issue last time was the proposed shed in the setback on the southerly stop, west of the side.
Is there a determination involved?
No.
So what do we think? Darren, Michael?
It's a lot better than it was.
Miss tight down there. Anybody want to, oh, the audience. Does anybody in the audience want to talk about this? Um, okay, so does anybody on the board want to talk about this?
It's really close, twenty-nine point nine eight feet, so they can't put an extra layer of shingles on this.
That's right, if you're one foot over.
You screwed it.
On the height issue?
No.
No.
Wrong.
Oh, yeah. Well, he'll be back and we're not going to give it to him. Say your final word on that. Somebody will do something. Maybe you can get me thrown off, or something. Uh, anyway, it seems a little tight.
It seemed very tight. I mean...
That's the applicant's...
Yeah, that's your problem.
Um, right, to try to get the last square inch, so just don't come back. So...
So do we just need another plan to attach to our decision, or just?
I think I would do it, right?
That plan's okay, isn't it?
Mark's plan, yeah.
I believe so. Uh, okay. Anybody want to make a motion? No? Sorry, man, you're done. Come on.
Move to grant the relief as requested.
Oh, I have one question, I'm sorry. I just, sorry. Does the LP take, oh, they're allowed, actually you made them smaller, I forgot it. So they're allowed by donations, okay? Sorry, go ahead.
No, it's all right. Go ahead, Michael, we're ready. Or do you want to talk about it more? I don't want to force you or anybody to make a motion.
No, I, I made the motion.
To grant the relief as requested, with this M W P designed plan dated eleven six fourteen as Exhibit A?
Correct.
I'm good with that.
I'll second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. I do like the notation here.
Okay.
Foundation should be surveyed after installation or prior to continued construction.
Yeah, it's always good to put it in. All right, so now we have, I think... Which one? Oh, that one was continued, yes. Fifty-three fourteen, Tac three. I don't think I sat on that, I didn't. So Mr. O'Meara, you did sit on this. I did? Tac three? I don't, no, fifty-three fourteen?
I'm sitting at this for Jeff.
No, I'm not sitting at it either.
No, it opened last week.
All right, so I guess you're in charge, Lisa.
I said, I think Lisa's in charge.
Okay, so for the applicant.
All right, we read, and our engineer and surveyor, Art Gasparo, and the architect, Chip Webster. We discussed this at the last meeting, and I think it would be helpful to basically go through the application again with regard to the height issue. As you know, this is a existing building down on Washington Street on the water side, and what we're proposing to do is to increase the height of the building because of major work that will be done on the property and the requirements that have now been put in as a result of changes in FEMA. Project has been approved by the H D C, and that's what Chip will describe. First, I want to have you each get a copy of a plan that I think will be helpful in connection with ours' presentation, that will show what we're doing here and the extent of, of the changes, which I think may have been somewhat confused when you heard this before.
Thank you, Art Gasparo, Blackwell and Associates. The plan that I just handed out is nearly identical to the one that was submitted and is in your packet. I had only added a couple of notes to the plan, so the only note I added was just to clarify that the plan you're looking at is schematic in nature, and I added a note to that effect in the word "height", that basically I just wanted to be sure it was, understand this was essentially a line diagram that depicts the height. Just to back up a little bit, I don't want to be too repetitive to the last hearing, but I think that it's important that, to quickly go over the flood zone changes, the FEMA mapping that came into effect in June of this year, changed this area from was a stillwater flood elevation of eight to now a velocity zone elevation of twelve point four. And what that essentially means is that the structure needs to be elevated when you do a certain amount of work, and that's, we're past that threshold. So we have to pick the structure up and meet the, essentially, there's amendments to the Mass Building Code that have a requirement for a couple of feet of clear space below your lowest structural floor members, as opposed to, you're probably very familiar with a lot of cases where it's a threshold that has to meet a flood elevation. Because this has now been placed into what's known as a velocity zone, there's actually, it has to be even higher than, it's not just the threshold, but it's actually having to provide clear space underneath. Again, a significant, a significant change happened in June with the change of the mapping, and that's really what's driving the height of the structure. So based on the, what I heard at the last hearing, I tried to put together a very simple drawing, if you will, which is what's in front of you, to depict the scenarios that we have. And on the left is the, essentially, the existing structure showing it at twenty-five point two feet above grade and where the existing first floor elevation is. The middle line diagram depicts taking the existing structure and placing it on top of a foundation and setting the, setting the first floor in such a position so as to comply with building codes for within the floodway. That results in a, a structure height above grade of thirty-two point seven feet. The, but that's using the existing structure, which is not H D C, not the H D C approved design that they have. The, all the way on the right depicts a modified structure that is what has been approved by H D C as well as by CONCOM, which meets all of the flood zone requirements and is essentially one point seven feet higher than the minimum of just taking your existing structure and putting it on, and building it up in the higher elevation. And I think there was a bit of discussion at the last meeting, or confusion, or perhaps from the lack of clarity of the plans. Well, how much higher are you going than the minimum that you, that you need to? And really, it's what we're asking for is one point seven feet above if we would And really, it's what we're asking for is one point seven feet above if we were just taking the existing structure, and that would allow the applicants to, um, utilize, and Chip could speak further to this, uh, a design that's more harmonious and keeping with the, you know, um, uh, building with Nantucket in mind and the HDC standards. But just from, from my perspective as, as the surveyor and providing you straight, as I can, distances and heights, um, the existing structure moved into a flood compliant position would be thirty-two point seven feet above grade, the, um, application and the designed structure would be at thirty-four point four feet above grade, and again, all driven by having to raise that flood, uh, first floor elevation and, uh, provide the clear space for the, the building codes. And I'll be available should you have any questions or comments for me.
Thank you. I think this is helpful, because I think there was confusion about how the application was ordered last time, or there was something that didn't make sense in terms of how much height you were asking for and what appeared to be what the requirement was, it seems to be an extra three or four feet in there.
That's what we tried to clarify.
So this, I mean
Your comments at the last hearing made that clear to me.
Yeah.
Uh, we have, uh, Chip now come on and, and just explain briefly what the reason for the further increase in height to one point seven feet would be.
Can I ask a question, please? Can I show you?
Yeah, sure.
What goes in, in that eleven feet? Underneath there?
Uh, nothing, it's clear space for floodwaters.
Parking, is it?
You know, I, I wonder about that, we're not proposing that, one of my concerns would be if you have structural members that have to possibly support the structure itself, you know, whether it's lally column or, or whatnot, um, so, if not proposed, I don't know whether that would be allowed or not.
Because I just take down a floor there where you have all these houses that are up at the air
Right. The parking under
Ninety-nine percent of them have a, you know, some kind of parking underneath
Right.
that would help alleviate the waiver you're looking for.
That, I think, may also come into play, we have to go through, um, uh, Chapter ninety-one, licensing in connection with this project, and, uh, that is an issue, again, we don't have the answer to as to whether that's going to be permitted or not, but it certainly could come up for discussion in connection with that.
Michael?
Is this driven by land?
I, I would defer to, uh, yes, actually, it, it will be driven by land.
So, I, I haven't provided, I, Chip, I, this is a drawing of the HDC approval on the first page, and then on the second page of what the existing structure brought up to the conforming height would be. A note on the, on the second page, where it, we raised, it's just the structure, there's some stairs that are sort of floating and so forth, but that's just that we literally pulled it up, obviously, if we figured we'd make the stairs a little different, so comparison taken.
So, the, um, so the drawing before you on the first page is what's currently been approved by the HDC, the second page is sort of an abstract version of what the existing structure would look like brought up to a conforming height. The one point seven, I also point out that the existing structure has extremely low first floor ceiling heights, they're just over seven feet, so part, uh, part of this is, uh, proposing an eight-foot ceiling height, which is more customary in the first floor, so that's part of the reason, and the other part of the reason is the roof pitches and the massing and so forth that are, uh, more desirable by the HDC.
Is the roof walk in addition to the?
The roof walk, uh, for purposes of height calculation is in addition to it, and that's, that's true, there's an existing roof walk and a proposed roof walk, so that's true in both cases.
So, this thing is gonna be, you're proposing it to be roughly thirty-eight feet height, including the roof walk?
Uh, thirty-seven point seven, roughly thirty-eight, that's correct.
But the roof walk, in, in all cases, we can count it as a height, I mean, you have a certain story built in legally and then have a roof walk above that, so.
And as noted, I'm not sure that, we've started again, but, uh, this is HDC-approved.
Is there anybody in the audience?
Question about the, um, the parking waiver? This is currently, uh, permitted as a office, is that correct?
Uh, there is a dwelling, uh, and, uh, what has been back and forth between office and retail on the first floor.
The ninety-two, the ninety special permit was for an office.
Yeah, and I believe
Is there, is there, was there something after that?
I think so.
There was a residential as well.
Residential, but is there a, is there a parking situation, or, or did the, a previous board approve, between ninety-two and today, approve a retail use here?
Yeah, let me check here, uh, I, um, I'm posting on the other issue, on the previous question, that's, um, um, to, uh, um, I'm sorry.
Okay, what are we looking for? I have, it discussed parking.
I was just looking at your staff memo, it just says, but your conclusion is that if upon use operations proposed require start from scratch approach to parking.
That's two thousand, those notifications, um, the applicants, let's see, uh, nineteen ninety-two release was granted on the basis of usage, consisting of one single time dwelling, about five hundred and twenty-five square feet in office or retail use, and up four employees in actual retail use, uh, five parking spaces required for the above, one dwelling, three for the retail office space, one for employees used for, uh, used for retail, one space was waived in ninety-two and four spaces were not provided, um, the applicants, now proposed to the two thousand used commercial spaces, which was office used rather than retail, there's all would be, the two spaces would be required for two dwellings, and three spaces for the office used for about five hundred and seventy months' worth of public space, the applicants proposed to divide four parking spaces, the mention of the time, that's what we're looking for in, in two thousand.
Well, in ninety-two is, it was approved for office space.
Yeah.
And now in two thou, then in two thousand, it was, as, as the state here, was changed from retail to office, which doesn't make any sense.
It was originally office or retail, it said in the, in the manual decision.
At, at one point, it was electronics.
Yeah.
Okay, well, this says, and three for the office space, in ninety-two, it says, and three for the office space on the first floor.
The decision two thousand, the third of nineteen ninety-two decision has, um, in office or retail.
That's not what it says in the special permit. It just says office space on the first floor in the ninety-two permit.
Right, I know, but as long as that's what we're used for retail, I, I, you know, I think we, we know that.
But now you're asking for, I, can I ask our, our question though, relative to parking? The, the site plan looks really tight between the parking in the garage and the, and the free parking spaces that are on the, um, across from it, is that a, a proper aisle width?
No.
So, how do you get in and out of that garage if those parking spaces are used?
It is tight.
It's, looks impossible.
Shouldn't you be asking for a waiver to, of the aisle width?
I don't think you could physically get in and out.
You can't.
Depending on what type of cars you're trying to
I mean, it's so
I, I think perhaps the, the difference would be whether it's aisle width or driveway width in that space, because we weren't looking at this necessarily as a parking lot.
What do we?
And we, we acknowledge that it, it certainly is, you know, quite, quite tight. I think that a couple, another thing to consider in this area is that, um, we're immediately adjacent to a district that now doesn't require any parking spaces at all. You also have an abundance of, uh, the public parking on the streets there and Wilk Square and that area, you also have the town lot right nearby as well, so I would hope you may factor those in, and we're, we're trying to, we, we have gone on to the adjacent property to try to get some width there and, um, and provide what we can in a, in an area, though, that is, like we say, right immediately adjacent to an area that's now not requiring any parking.
So, currently, there is a retail, a, a commercial space of some sort and one dwelling unit, is that correct?
Yes.
And you're looking for retaining nine hundred and sixty square feet of commercial use of some sort and two dwelling units?
Right.
So, I think we, but is it safe to say that we should discount the spaces that are in that parking, in the garage, or, or?
Well, there is no garage.
But there is, it's proposed on the plan.
There's a garage there now?
Yeah, proposed, proposed.
And you're gonna put a garage in addition to what's, I'm missing this.
Second, second site plan.
Page one sixty.
And what's above the garage?
Storage, storage.
And so your storage is not a dwelling or
It just looks like those spaces would be impossible to use.
Yeah, exactly.
They shouldn't be counted towards parking. I'm not saying, so I'm thinking you're asking for more of a waiver, potentially, because you're only providing really three spaces.
I think this is a terribly intense plan. I just don't, I don't get this, putting a garage there, I, I, you know, I understand the garage being there for the, this is gonna be condo probably, and great to have a condo with a garage, but.
I think it looks very tight as well, it just looks like that other building. And, and you're probably doing it for the storage, because you don't have a square footage in the building for storage, how do you guess?
Right.
In the basement, but it just, it looks very, very tight. And it's a very busy part of Washington Street, and my office was not far from there when we rented down there, it's just, the traffic's terrible, just, it seems like a, a nightmare in terms of getting access to this building with that structure there.
I have to say, I don't like the height, I don't like the intensity, I don't like the parking waiver. I think it looks nice, but.
I agree, it, it looks nice, but there's a lot going on there.
And I understand what you're saying about parking, you know, down the street in the town parking lot, if you can find a parking space, and the retail, a re, retail customer, if they have to walk, they, they're not gonna park someplace else. That's from twenty years of experience.
Based on Lisa's comments, uh, on the press, we should continue in order to develop for other parking situations, parking lot. Kind of like, it's a more comfortable realistic parking, but they, they price her like a waiver like for the program.
Yeah, it sounds like to me, and I don't wanna speak for everybody, but that, just the inclusion of this other structure in the front of this lot gives over an element of the site and actually compromises the use of the parking area.
What's the distance between the end of the twenty-foot parking and the garage?
Looks like twelve feet, something like that.
How do you pull out?
Well, you don't, and you can't, I don't think you could, and nobody could ever pull into that first space, you'd have to make like a, uh, you know, you'd have to make a complete U-turn, perhaps, where you get into there, depending on where you're coming from.
I'd rather, I know you're supposed to stay outside the setbacks in parking.
They're already over the line.
No, I know that, that, I see that side, but, I, I just, this, this, this is a horrible point.
What we did was to leave, uh, a gap space between the garage and the structure, the way I envisioned this working is that you would, you would pull into that area and then back into these spaces, or if you were pulled, you were pulled into one of these spaces, you would back into that area to pull back out. And i, if it's not clear where I'm talking about, it's, it's sort of where that label, the, the proposed trust lift is, that would all be, that's all proposed as brick area, so that, and, and, so you have more than a car width there. I, I don't disagree that it's, 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 it's quite tight, uh, but that was, you know, what, what we had in mind for maneuvering so as to not back onto Washington Street.
But if there are three people parked in the three spaces that are, that are on the, um, I'm not sure where, where it is, so, on the north side of the lot, how would you physically get into the garage?
I don't know that you could.
Okay, that, that was, that's my point.
Right.
It's more about, that physically, those two spaces can be considered as part of the parking, because I don't see them as being usable at all.
And, and the garage, sorry, you guys were saying that, um, your storage
Above.
If, um, would anyone be more comfortable if they made a, a one-part garage?
I'm not comfortable with any other structures on this lot, no.
Is there support for the application without the garage?
I still think it's too intense.
Could I, could I ask?
That's just my opinion, I think the retail use is, in, if you have to, if you're asking for parking waivers, and I understand what you're saying about, you know, one block over, you got none, um, I'd have a hard time giving a parking waiver with a retail use there.
I'd be willing to support it with, I'm starting, go ahead.
And, 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 and two apartments.
I'm willing to support it without the, the garage.
I, I, I think I am too, I mean, when I see the diagram in terms of the architecture, it makes sense, they need to raise the building, I don't, I think the building looks nice, I just think that the intensity of, um, the front of the lot is not appropriate, in terms of the garage structure being there.
Yeah, I agree with Michael on this one.
And the parking would, it would work much better without that building there, and you'd be able to get in more spaces, that would actually probably function.
You wanna talk to your, uh, your client?
Yeah, I mean, this client, uh, obviously, we need to do a new plan in order to show this, um, and, um, I would, um, I think we probably should continue, I don't know if we'll put that in, uh, and, uh.
The other... the other point is that there are aisle widths in the zoning bylaw. And these are not even... you know, I don't believe these are even close to what they're supposed to be.
Yeah, they were suggesting that they might ask for relief from aisle width.
So they're not asking for that now?
Well, I don't know if that...
It was not in the application.
No, no, no.
They asked for a release from number five.
Right.
But you definitely... I believe you're going to need aisle width waivers also.
I don't think how we lay it out.
Right, with the building gone.
For our job there.
Right. They might not need it.
Okay.
Okay, so did somebody make a motion to continue? Oh, did I not ask? I thought I did ask.
You asked.
I did ask, thank you.
Before we continue, I know that they're basically... so the comments that seem planned for the discussion, I know the guy has a preview of the agreement pretty much if the garage were removed. Michael, you have a problem with it?
I still have... I still think the use and the parking waivers are... I think it's very intense. Even with the garage removed, I still think it's intense.
I don't really think so.
Because I also agree with Michael on his point. One of the concerns I have is what kind of retail is going in there. We don't know. And I'm kind of... that's what leaves me on the fence. It could be something that's going to be very busy. People are going to be pulling in with cars out in Washington Street over there. Even with that building gone. I'd really have to see it visually on the plans, then I'll decide.
I mean, the paper's a problem, kind of a dust on that. It is important to us. I know that the retail, because of the fact that we're dealing with water dependence here, as far as the work we're doing on this, an office is still not water dependent. We definitely can certainly have water dependency and provide that hopefully something that we've been defining the way that the potential is great for.
I still don't see anything in the previous special permits which permit retail use. Even though there has been retail there, I don't see anything in the special permits.
It is referred to as having been there in the...
But it's... they're not in the... they're not in the special permits.
I think it's something in our report that was unclear... oh, that was the...
You mean in the last permit?
In the la... in the... neither...
It was... it is not clear if their first floor retail space was converted to office space.
No, it was the other... it should be the other way around, because the ninety-two permit specifies office.
But it was metal wall, electronics.
I'm just saying.
Something else before that, if Mickey Rowan...
Mickey, Mickey.
Office of their original.
Right.
He owned it, I think.
Yeah. And the next owner had a retail shop in there, too.
Party. Whatever.
Whether it was ever... I would assume it was sanctioned by us.
Nothing near you. Me, sir?
Did you make a motion, Michael?
I didn't.
Can we all make a...
Make a motion to continue to... what's the next meeting date?
December one.
December eleven?
Do you have a second?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
To make up for that hour and twenty minutes on that first one.
I'm doing my best. No, 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 I didn't... I couldn't get a motion.
Take a break. We are. You have the boogie, probably at two thirty though. That's why I...
Keep the break short.
Back in the woods today.
Actually, that's worse than fuck.
Mm-hmm. Not in them. Maybe we should... let's go before we...
I think we should meet. Arbitrator.
I feel like someone would argue that first one, we did both of those. I think if we would make a better combination, we're going to feel like we just kind of get that one just over time. We're coming through. I don't think it's hard to ask, like, hey, if this happens, like, what do I do?
Yeah, it's better.
Because then to turn around and use that, I could be... But I think from both things, the bylaw covers it a lot, but it's unintended. We don't know what we don't know. Well, I just can't see, like, once we got to some point, I don't understand where else to go.
I don't know why you think... I didn't... last one. Man, we haven't scratched the surface.
Board review.
You're free to review.
Yeah. You have a number to nail, number five.
I nominated you for chairman.
And you lost.
We'll ask after this one. Let's go. All right, Gull Island, I think we're on fifty-eight fourteen.
Yeah.
Mark D. Forsyth and Suzanne J. Forsyth, eight Gull Island Lane. I'm taking over for Jeff Thayer. Is there anybody here to talk about this? No. Okay, we're going to pass that one over. We can do that, right?
Who's supposed to be here?
Is he still not?
He's not here. Cut him. Let's take a vote. All right.
Sorry. Well, wait a minute. I mean, do we have to have him?
I don't think... If everyone, I'm assuming, is no...
You want to talk?
He doesn't have to be here.
I view it as...
It's up to you if you want to do the third seat, extend first seat.
Does everyone see it?
You know, it's not immediate, so...
I viewed it, I might not be as... It doesn't matter, I'm only one, so... Let's wait till the end.
I was going to say, what's the possibility of him not being...
Yeah, there's always that part. He could be home watching Oprah, we don't know. That's what I like.
She's been canceled for years.
The reruns. All righty, anyway, sixty-fourteen, Susan S. White, Lindsay White is trustees of the Susan S. White Revocable Trust.
Karim, you want to sit on this one?
Fourteen D Street, for the applicant.
If any gentleman, the applicant, Tom Brecker, represents Susan S. White, the name is Susan White, of the American fourteen D Street, and that is it. The applicant's car location, second currently, pertains to the zone from here, zone by law, section one three nine six two. To validate the intention of setback intrusion from relocation to the bunkhouse. The bunkhouse was relocated and moved out on one percent to the media, the city, and the borough. Relocated structures on the lot, right on the corner, lot is undersized, and the number side of the lot appears to have approximately thirteen thousand seven hundred thirty square feet. And we are zoning this position, requires in the lot has twenty thousand square feet. And the primary zone, which is the structure, is approximately thirteen square feet from the near yard lot line. The zoning this position requires a setback. As a subject of... It's up to them to know that today's bid option is on the bylaw. The bunkhouse was originally... this is the subject of the Oklahoma three zero zero. The bunkhouse was originally two point six seven feet from the southwest of the lot line. And the board of the field, back then, in August two thousand, read this application. And the owner, the applicant, they wanted to... they put a dividend on the bunkhouse. And the board said, well, if you're going to put a new foundation on, why don't you lift it up and move it out of the setback? Everybody thought this was a reasonable idea, and everything was good, and so they did so, as they thought. The... it was... From the file, you see the building's comment, it was a final sign off in two thousand two. However, there's no ad built done, and the owner is trying to clean up property now and close up buildings. And lo and behold, they find out that the bunkhouse is approximately nine point six four feet from the sidewalk lot line, and requires this new source of setback. Structures have been in current operation since two thousand two. Ask the owner if the other question will happen. He thought that John Segrew was going to... Surveyed it originally under the proposed location, and the owner did the construction back in two thousand three, and they thought it was mine, all set, and then just leave it. We call that... obviously, the complaint, at least in the fall, stands up for in June of this year. And that there is nine point... Nine point six four feet from the sidewalk lot line. Again, it's under an unintentional setback intrusion, and it's left there in the question of guarantee. The non-intentional setback intrusion is appropriate in this instance. There's a burden corrected, and the maintenance is true, and probably the extension required of location like this.
And you have evidence of this survey, John Segrew's survey?
Well...
That he did the work, or you're just telling us that...
Well, he did the...
On... those are the old ones, right, of the...
Correct.
It doesn't... that isn't other than doing what we're talking about now.
The survey planned done in two thousand, as a basis of the application, has chosen the bunkhouse two point six seven feet from the lot line. With the application, it was listed by Mr. Segrew, this hand wrote or hand drew in the plan, that it would be transferred from the lot line, all under the date of March thirty first two thousand. Thereafter, the work was done, which is all in the fall, and now we're doing this here. This... that is what should be ten feet, and that's what Segrew submitted, who wrote in eighteen. But I assume that wasn't Segrew.
Yeah, those are... the ten feet things are not Segrew's, right? No. I would assume that's from the corner and from the corner, but I don't know.
If you're looking, you think it's two oh six and two oh seven? Those were the plans that I found in the application as submitted for the oh four three dash zero zero seven. Prior to the work proposed. And there's a condition in the decision is that the bunkhouse shall be decided outside of office. So in that, along with Segrew's time to call. This is what they showed. The board at the time said, well, if you're looking up to clean your new foundation, we'll put it out.
All right. Is it foundation or peers, you know?
Do you not know, but by understanding, my decision was foundation.
Michael O'Mara.
The foundation sign off.
Okay. Anybody in the audience want to talk about this?
No. What about the board?
Who's sitting on it?
Oh, the five of us, okay.
I don't have a five either.
It is better than it used to be, when the bunkhouse was two point something. It's unfortunate, since it was clear that it said it had to be outside, so...
I just think it was done so long ago, and they're trying to clean it up. It's not like they were here last year, we told them, and then...
Well, I mean, it was only thirteen years ago, fifteen years ago. I don't... that argument I don't necessarily buy, because then why not do what you want and just wait fifteen years? Or ten years, or whatever.
No C E O.
I take you back.
Good, thank you.
Again, they're all the sign offs from two thousand two.
Or maybe they got the ads built and it wasn't kosher, so we don't know. Imagine cynic, I mean. Comes out every once in a while.
Is it the same owner?
Yes, the same owner is going to be in the capacity of innovation generation.
Are they selling it?
They're just trying to clean it up.
All right, well, I don't... I don't... I don't see the... it is better. I can hang my hat on the fact it's much better than it used to be. It's probably just a little bit, because it's angled.
We got one more coming.
Yeah, I know. I saw that.
On what basis?
Well, it's a special permit, not a variance.
It's a variance. Is it a special permit?
Well, I mean, that's another one of the bylaws.
I know, I mean, what's...
The wording, I love. Because nobody would come in here and say, "I intentionally put the building in the setback."
Didn't Reta have a client that said that was...
If she did, somehow she was indignant about our interpretation.
Well, I think the plan that was submitted showed that it was... they had, even if it was handwritten in, that it was ten feet. It was the decision that it was to be ten feet. I don't know, they intended, you know, to do it ten feet and miss them all.
I think it's... Yeah, well, Michael, do you have a problem? Or...
They're all unintentional.
This is my point. No one does it intentionally, or they're not going to tell us they did, so...
Is that a motion you just sent?
And I guess why is... why is this one unintentional versus a variance, where Gull Island is a variance?
Well, you're not getting new, not from these, it's already... the existing structure wasn't that...
Right. The bunkhouse was two point six seven feet when they applied for this relief. They then...
So they moved the bunkhouse and then added to it?
Through the process, they glommed the bunkhouse onto the new structure and moved it out of the setback. So that is the difference, Michael. They... they could have come for relief at that time and, you know, no closer than, but Michael O'Mara, Mr. Horahan, et cetera, et cetera, in their infinite wisdom, said, "Why don't you pick it up, move it out?" They agreed to do that, and seemingly unintentionally, missed the mark on that one corner. Okay. Like I said, I mean, I tend to agree with you, Michael, and I do think that they did make a situation here much better, and... So I can hang my hat on that one.
I just think it's unintentional, because what, like, if you're going to be intentional about it, you'd do more of a grab than point three six feet.
Okay, I agree with you, but, having said that, I mean, at a certain point, you gotta draw the line.
Yeah, yeah, no, I totally agree.
And we talk a lot about drawing the line.
And I'm willing to draw the line on some things, I just think this isn't one. That's about, that's just me.
Just, the hormones.
What?
You're still annoyed?
Just watch out.
All right, is that a motion?
Sure.
Who may?
Susan. All those in favor? I mean, any further discussion? No, all those in favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
All right, so. So we've got the, we can go back to Izzy, well, no, we should wait.
Do we want to see if he's upstairs, or?
Are you, are you, yeah, yeah, let's go to forty fourteen. Nantucket Island Resorts, Point Cherry Street, for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we're looking at the applicant. I, I'm actually just here today to request a continuance.
You could have raised your hand and asked.
Do you want to continue this through next season, so they can continue running to Nantucket Tent? Would that be nice? What, uh, you, you might, some of you may have been, uh, uh, living here last month, but, uh, I submitted a letter last month, for this offender, uh, the question continues to February, two thousand two. Uh, I didn't appear at the applicant, and I wanted to ask him to come explain to me, because, you know, swing around here for the lot, and, you know, it's a little hard to get. Uh, admittedly, it was a bit of an unusual request. Um, but, uh, but so that's, uh, that's why I, uh, and I just want to give you the reasons for it. Um, and just to give you a, a tiny bit of background, uh, on the board, because the genesis of this case is, uh, we, we are enforcement owners of markets. Uh, and so what we did was we appealed that, uh, and at some point, the summer before we came in for, uh, the lot of Tim. Uh, Andrew Board, talking to Boris, he recommended, complaining board, you know, the definition to use. And Andrew recommended to me that, uh, we should really come in for, sort of, come in and alternatives, but to be, uh, to, to continue. At that time, uh, made that application, ready to come in from, uh, a court. And, uh, the applicant asked me, uh, to stop what I referred, because, uh, I want to procure the status of this lease to come in, to finish it at this time. Um, so, knowing that it started with enforcement order, I think we can't just withdraw the application. So, uh, I suggested we continue, sit down with Eleanor and Leslie, uh, and, and we had talked about a continuance out far enough, since, since we were in the building. Uh, far enough so that, uh, we have an opportunity to try to figure out what's going to happen from the summer. And, uh, if it's necessary to come in on the application, then, uh, if not, we just, we'll, uh, we'll, uh, so. I think the whole point of it was really to just kind of, not waste the time, if it's not necessary, particularly given, obviously, the time, you know, there's still, um, probably no competition. Uh, and I probably see if there was any reason to.
When did the lease expire?
I think it's, I mean, right? So before next spring, that, that was the point, and that was the point I said in my letter. Now, obviously, the board's, uh, whether it's for markets, I think the neighbors as well, it's very good, you know, it's a, it's a, um, so, you know, they all need, possibly, to do it, uh, before, uh, running.
And the neighbors, uh, the neighbors here around?
I think so, I'm not, I don't know, actually.
There's some, there's some very good letters from neighbors, and they're good, meaning they did a lot of research into not only this, but there's a long dissertation on. This cannot be anything more than a greenhouse. Really interesting, in the fact.
I believe it, um.
Thank you for asking, I think it's, uh, I believe it's, uh, 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 it's really, I think, so I think, we might, uh, and, uh.
Well, the applicant has asked for a continuance, are we comfortable with that?
Do you have one?
No, okay, till February?
I, I'm comfortable with the continuance, based on the representation last time, that the building, when did we see that before, October? So, in that meeting, it was said that the building wasn't in use, it was just dormant, like, the stuff is stored.
Can I interrupt you for one second?
Yeah, sure.
So, this hearing is open at this point, because in October it was, and you presented enough.
Yeah, I, I, I'd ask for it to not be.
Yeah, so I, I just want to be, I don't mean to inter, I didn't mean to interrupt, sorry, but I just want to be clear, it's either open or it's not. So we're only talking about, I should have cut you off earlier.
Sorry, yeah.
So, just time out.
Okay.
So, do we, do we want to open this, or do we want to continue? Let, let's just talk about, let's pretend we didn't hear anything from Rex, within reason.
Okay, so then I, then I, what I was going to say, I think, no, it's okay, but, so. If we were, so if we're just talking about continuing or not, and there is a violation to cease, desist, and abate. I guess that the tent season is now over, and it was represented to us in October, that the building was dormant and not being used, and blah, blah, blah. But I did drive by, and the garage was open, you can see all the tents, there, like, whatever storage there was, truck parked there, there seemed like there was some activity, so. I just want to make sure that if we, you know, because it is a, there's a zoning code violation, it's in order to cease and desist, so if we continue it to February, or, or sometime, you know, if the lease isn't up till May. I don't want, if there isn't, if, I mean, we haven't determined whether there is an issue with the neighbor or not, but if there is something going on, there's something that Marcus thought was enough to issue a violation. I'm a little hesitant to continue if that violation is going to continue and drive the neighbor crazy, or, or just.
Fair enough.
I think that is fair.
Mr. Chairman. Carol just pointed out to me that, back whenever this began, I indicated that I had a conflict. I don't recall what it was, but I'm going to recuse myself from it now.
Okay.
Okay, so, we're not open, I mean?
Yeah, we're not open, so.
Well, we're not open anyway, so.
Looking for a continuation.
Well, Mark, can you sit on this? I mean, I think Susan's point is reasonable, that, um, you know, somebody, there's an aggrieved party.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm with you, and, I mean, I'm, I'm just thinking out loud that if I'm the tenant, I want to know where I'm going to be next summer. And, seems to me like this would be a good time to figure out whether the tenants there legally, or whether they're not. And if they're not there legally, this will give them plenty of time to find a new location. Rather than ask for an emergency permit for, for six months next spring.
So you'd like to see it proceed?
That's, I just, I'll do whatever the board.
Well, that's great, and the other thing is, I mean, there's a tenant who's considered paying rent and has an agreement to be in a place where there's an order to cease and desist, and so if we continue, like.
But they can continue to do, i- is it true, Eleanor, they can continue to do business under the cease and desist as long as they're here, thus the continuance?
Right, but it's, but it's been represented to us that it wasn't in use.
I didn't want to deeply offend you, I just wanted to.
I was, Marcus, I couldn't remember who said it.
Marcus was here last month, not in particular for this, but we have been in the audience, and, and really, it's been, while we allow this, we can do such a crap, during the time, these have been across, so Marcus said, I would not pursue action while an appeal is, uh, uh.
And that's historically what is happening.
Yeah, and that makes sense, I mean, it, it appeals going on, so.
But not, it doesn't make sense to, and I'm not talking specifically about this one, but so, in, in the past, we've continued things ad nauseam, and the, the, uh, activity has continued. Uh, which I don't think we want to do here, or any longer.
I don't think it's fair to any of the neighbors, yeah.
I don't think it's fair to the tenant, the neighbor, or, you know, I mean, it's just already sort of stopped.
So, you saw the hearing that we should, we, we don't want to give you a continuance, is that what I'm hearing?
Uh, I, I guess, I mean, I'm, again, one vote, I would say, if you want to continue for another month, fine, but.
I'm good with not.
I appreciate that, since I, you know, was at this point.
Yeah, it's fair enough.
Yeah.
But, I mean, you know, your point is well taken, don't, don't get me wrong, and that's why I said, look, you know, my, my client called me today, you know, to worry about their special permit, and that's what's going to happen, that's fair, right? You know, when you heard that, or, you need, you need resolution, so, believe me, I would just withdraw it, withdraw it long ago, you know, to be, to try to keep things going. I also would have to, you know, like I said, for at least some months, um, a bit, I mean, we need a, 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 for.
Well, having said that, I think you should tell your client that Susan's been going, gone by there and seen.
This was like a week and a half ago, like, I don't know, maybe it's all but that now.
There is activity, it's not going to bode well if others of us go by there, and there's continued activity, and.
Yeah.
Not within reason, we're not giving a continuance for one month, so they continue, can continue to business within reason, so. So we're good for one month?
Yeah, and it's not open, right?
It wasn't open, we did a lot of discussion, though, it wasn't open.
We're only going to continue for a month?
All right. Uh, motion's been made in seconds, is anybody in the audience?
No.
Uh, okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who may, Karen?
Yeah. Yeah, Kerim wants to leave.
Who's second in that motion?
Thank you.
So, can everybody sit on Don Allen?
I'm not sitting on Don Allen.
No Don Allen.
Everybody's sitting on Don.
One, two, three.
Michael can I sit on?
Lisa cannot sit on Wall Street, can everybody else sit on Wall? Preserve Act, uh, fifteen meter, everybody sit on that? And the emergency house move, twenty one Chief Pond Road.
Are there any that, uh, if we think there's any that are going to continue beyond December, I won't, definitely, I won't be here for him, right? For sure, because I'll be having a baby, so.
Amen, uh.
And, uh, is it good?
I think so.
Because he can always listen in at some point, yeah, okay.
Thank you. Okay, so, Michael's not sitting. Two, four, five, yeah, Lisa's.
Yes.
All right, we ready? Let Lisa find her place.
Yeah, sorry.
Please. She has to put on her other hat.
This was more fun than this thing. That was not fun at all.
We're going to try to change it.
Make this less fun?
Yeah.
Do we feel like that gets more of a draw?
That we can get better audience participation.
Three seventy five, two seventy eight.
I think it's.
Nine.
Two seventy five is done on.
Uh, two seventy five, sorry.
Two seventy five, okay, I'm ready to. Okay, you ready?
Yep.
Not quite.
I'm, I'm close enough.
All right, two seventy five, page number for the applicant, you seem, just identify yourself for the table, please.
Eric Evans, we don't have one. In March two thousand twelve, we got approved for ten public doors, uh, self cars, and, uh, we, we also got approved for a car. We spent conducting business there. This summer, we got a letter from Marcus stating that, um, we were violating, uh, the, uh, the parking display cars in the parking spot. So, I said, um, you know, I have no place to, uh, park display cars, so I'm here today to, um, ask if we could, uh, have proposed display parking areas on the lot. So we can move forward and conduct that.
So does that, can I just ask this quick question, does the display area that you're showing in front of the building, the long public road, eliminate the three spaces that existed as parking?
No, that, that's part of what we're going to discuss, can you park a car, for instance, a display car, in a parking space? I don't know, we're going to talk about it. I, I have some other questions, but yeah, definitely.
So you're reducing the number of parking spaces that you actually have, essentially?
Well, we're going to, yeah, possibly.
What kind of car you have to park there, it could be somebody, you could be just.
Well, the question is, I mean, go ahead, just finish.
The parking requirement, uh, calls for twelve spots, we have thirteen spots.
Had, you're proposing now how many?
Uh, I'm proposing to use our, uh, requirement by two, well, we'll reduce it by three, but the actual requirement by two.
You're asking for a way of two to break this.
Is that, is that it? I'm not saying there should be more, by the way, but, uh, I have some questions, or anybody else want to start?
I just want to comment that I think it looks very nice, what you guys did, after you came back here, and, you know, we slapped your hand.
Well, do we, we didn't slap his.
We slapped Rod's hand.
We, we simply suggested some ways he might want to beautify his property, which he did, and someone seems like they're going out of style. Why can't you put these three spaces on the plan elsewhere?
So, as we're sitting here, and.
Or two, you only need two.
I was listening, um, I was.
And then you don't have to be here.
Another proposal could be that I can, two, two spaces back here, behind the building.
Where, so it's a display area?
Correct.
No, because they would be blocked by the other ones, no, 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 you put two right here, where it says lots twelve and seventeen.
Right here, in front of the lanes for inspection.
We don't, you know, I don't really understand, well, I, I understand why you might need to be here vis a vis a modification of your, uh, site plan. But I, I think you might be able to skin the cat differently, I mean, I mean, for instance. Blessing the display area, which I'm not sure we need to do, but behind parking spaces eight, nine, and ten, or whatever that number is, ten, I can't.
Nine and ten.
Nine and ten, behind the building in the corner, seems to make no sense to me, because why the hell would you park a car back there, but.
But you can do that anyway, what, what do we have to do with that?
So, I think, unless I'm misreading this, I don't even understand why you needed to delineate, um, and maybe we asked for this, lane for inspection on your site plan.
We didn't ask for that, I think that was always shown.
It was, but those could be parking spaces.
But you, you actually only use two lanes anyway, don't you?
Correct.
Okay.
So what ha, what happened was, is we had two cars, we still do, I'm trying to, I'm trying to show you what's there. Um, I, uh, you guys can buy lately?
Mm-hmm.
So you see the jeeps that are backed up against the hydrangeas, and then there's four cars parked right here, and then I have cars for storage in the back, right? So, the letter that I got said that I was parking cars in the, um, assigned parking spots for customers and employees, and I had cars parked in the inspection lane. Now, I did have a few parked down on this lane here, um, so.
So you were part of having three lanes?
Is there a requirement at all for, I, I'm curious, I don't know, in your business, is there?
I mean, it makes sense for them to have a lane, because people have to line up there.
Well, no question, but you could also have parked, you could have probably ten more, sorry. You could have ten, you know, I could just pull in and park and wait for my turn, too, you don't have to have a lane, unless it's required.
It creates flow, because, because you can't back out, and then.
I know in practical terms, I'm talking about in zoning terms, do you need a lane for inspection?
No, but I think it was more for him to show it, because.
Nothing in zoning that says we do.
No, I, I understand that, so.
So if Marcus made that part of the violation.
Made what part of the violation?
That he was parking cars in the, in the lane for inspection, maybe that is something we get rid of.
Can I ask the owner a question, why, uh, why did Marcus, Marcus typically doesn't take enforcement action without a complaint?
Correct.
Was there a complaint?
I, I, not one hundred percent, but I got it, someone contacted Leslie, Marcus wanted to, so, yes, there were complaints, but, and one, but, uh, uh.
Do we have Marcus's letter?
Is there a, do you have to submit a written complaint, or can you just call and? Or can you just call and say, I don't like something?
You can call.
You can call.
Okay, I'm just curious.
And the letter's coming to be because Mr. Evans is not appealing to the video termination, trying to rectify the situation, so the permit we modified to reflect the display area is part of the use of the company.
It looks like we, we put inspection lane in the condition.
Well, it's just on Exhibit A. It shows on the site plan.
Oh, 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 sorry, I was reading it wrong.
So we were, we could have, allow him to modify Exhibit A to show, I mean, if you wanna be clear about it, we should just have him show where he's gonna display the cars, and he should relocate the two additional parking spaces he needs, and then we just modify his program.
Yeah, that, that was my point, I mean...
What is that, what is that, Eric, what's this space?
That's handicap parking.
But can't, I just, I just don't wanna, um, like, I don't, the display area in the back and the display area next to the planting area, does he need to delineate?
I don't think so, I mean, you, you need twelve sp...
So I can legally park cars where there aren't parking spaces.
Because they're for display, like, the parking spaces are for customers.
You can park fifty customers on your lot, too, I hope you do.
We only require...
But we only require that you have twelve.
Right.
But I think Marcus's complaint was that the, three of the spaces were being taken by display cars, which is legitimate.
So could you put, like, could you put display cars, like, at the end of the lane, that way the people that are waiting are stopped looking at you?
Here's what I don't wanna, sorry, what I don't wanna do is, these cars back out here.
Oh, right, block it, right.
So I don't, I wanna keep that safe.
But if you don't use that lane for inspection, it would make sense that you'd park cars there.
But literally, why couldn't the two spaces show where it says lots, you know, the words, lot twelve and sixteen? You would have one and two there, or...
Right here.
Right, I think what he said...
I think if you went to a, whoever prepared this...
Surveyor.
Surveyor Earl and Sullivan.
Right.
Unless I'm missing something, Eleanor, and we need to tell Mr. Evans where he parks his display cars, or can park his display cars.
You could board the decision such that you're modifying the car decision to allow for display, exterior display capable for sale, ancillary to the, to the operation of the sale, to take place on there.
He would, yeah, we...
Without, without having to, you know...
Specify?
Yeah, I mean, he could, he could submit a, a site plan that says, you know, propose this layer, but I could word it such that, you know, more or less in conformity with...
But he would, you, I, I don't think the board, well, I'm gonna speak for myself, just myself, not the board, but I don't think I would be willing to waive. In other words, you can't suck up these spaces for display. You gotta show the proper number of spaces on a plan. How you do that is your business, and, you know, you might have to talk to Earl and Sullivan to make sure they comply and this, that, and the other.
Can I ask, just, so, if I came in here and said we wanna put, you know, two spaces right here and use these four spaces for employee parking, would that be acceptable?
Whether tandem, can we do that tandem?
Well, I think you have enough, you know, come up with your best shot, and ideally, they're not tandem. Now, you may pragmatically use tandem spaces back here, and John is here, and Sam is here, and Ellen's here, and someone's here, that doesn't matter to us. You just need to show ideally twelve legal spaces, if that's your requirement.
So I think what you're saying, the plan can show the spaces and how you, how you...
How you literally park the cars.
Right, so you could potentially have at least one space here, practically, that may...
Well, that's what, I think what Ed is saying, though, if you show it there and how you practically make it work, as long as the site plan is showing the parking working.
Cause when we have an issue with...
Within reason, because, but, but the problem is...
Parallel parking spaces along, we're driving anywhere.
We have an issue with, well, no, we wouldn't have an issue with the aisle left because we allow the parking space here, so we could at least put another one, yeah.
I mean, arguably, Marcus was flagging the pragmatic use, not the plan, because the plan shows it. So, in an ideal world, you show two more kosher spaces, and then we bless your display areas.
And I would get rid of one of the lanes for inspection if you don't need it.
Could I...
I don't feel that it helps, again.
Could I make spaces? So, this lane against the fence, can I...
Parallel parking spaces.
Make parallel parking spaces?
Why not?
Sure, yeah, why not?
You just might not be able to get into them. Other lanes, the lane is that you get to, you could then still get into those spaces, and then you would pull out and around and use them.
I, arguably, the lane for inspection could be stolen.
Go back to the surveyor and say, I need two more spaces, where's the best place for them to go, and see what options they come up with for you.
And if these are where you wanna display cars, don't let them put them in that area.
Okay.
Yeah, cause then you can find, where's your ideal area for displaying cars, and then have them figure out where there's two, one or two other spaces.
If you drove by today, the way it's set up now, if you had to go way back...
Which is basically here?
Correct.
Okay, so just find two other spots, legal spots, and put them on a plan, and come back.
I, that's what I would do, instead of having...
And remotely that way, well, I mean, you can leave it, and then take the third area off, because then, so that it's not held for that.
Yeah. You want, you, you mean, that may change as things change with the business, and you don't wanna have to, you know, tell what's the other display area.
Well, but the problem with that particular issue is if Marcus or somebody has a problem with the dis, the display of cars. Now, I don't know why they would, right down the road, there's a dealership with cars on display, and no one's ever kept them.
Yeah, I would, I think it would be ideal that, when this happens, if Mr. Evans provides a plan to show two additional parking spaces, so it can be used as an area for display, that the decisions modified to reflect, to allow use of available, engaged premises to display your vehicles to sale, ancillary to operation of the lot.
So they can be anywhere, yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, I agree with that, that makes sense.
Okay?
Okay.
So you would wanna ask us to continue this for a month, so you can come back with the, with the new site, Exhibit A.
I'll make that motion, if you want us to do that.
Okay, you wanna do that? All right.
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
All right, motions. Did anybody else wanna talk about this, Stephen?
I bought a car for, he did a good deal, I think I'm clear.
You think you got a good deal? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
What was that?
Okay, okay, anyway, uh, where are, so is this, who's the board? One, two, three, four?
Four, do you need, how many votes?
Mark over there, did he leave?
Mark.
All right, I got it.
What are you asking for, Mr. Collins?
Is this the long one?
Is it gonna be long? Uh, no, it's, it's really, it's really...
I gotta, I gotta go to the bathroom, so...
I'm happy to wait for you.
Thank you.
He's just going under his desk.
Oh, my God.
And, and I promise, if I get my relief, I won't tell you why he's in there.
What comment was that?
You're giving that away too cheaply tonight. It's worth more than...
And I hear they're only, uh, through nineteen, so I'm not in charge.
Is this guy from his house in the area?
No.
You done?
Yes. Oh, yeah, I know this one, yeah. That is the texture, absolutely. So, we'll, we think we can get it all wrapped up in six weeks, you know, so.
Oh, and are any works in, uh, Mr. Sowery?
I mean, we're a full foundation, I can imagine.
Do you wanna run upstairs and see if he's that age, do you think?
Yeah, yeah, that's what we're gonna see now. It comes off the side, it houses the laundry.
I mean, Lisa, if she sees him upstairs, then things will mention him.
We wanna level up the floor in the house, so the construction functions are bound.
Um, we... Overturned Marcus's opinion, um, to allow the applicant and the land bank to, the land bank to pursue, but I'm very, yeah.
Sorry about that.
Who's providing?
That first one?
Right, that's what we, he was asking, what did we do?
It wasn't an easy one, yeah, was it?
Yeah, it was.
Yeah?
I thought we did a good job, but it wasn't, wasn't an easy one.
So, on this property, I think it's easier if you actually look at the site map, or if you have it up, but essentially what we have is a, um...
Is this application, uh, sixty-two fourteen?
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
And this has been opened?
No.
No, there was a prior decision.
Yes. Okay, so this is an application for a variance related to ground cover. And what we're dealing with is a house that is partially constructed versus a disconsolidation, they've actually got the, essentially a frame and, I don't know, this other type, but it's pretty far along. Uh, the proposed second dwelling is already, I think, leave the foundations been bored, and they're, they're working on that. Those two, there's enough ground cover for. What the owner would also like to do is add the proposed addition in the front, which is only thirty-two square feet, it's a little bump out. Um, it's essentially a bay window, but it goes down to the ground. He has, they have enough ground cover now to do half of that, to do sixteen square feet instead of thirty-two square feet. It's only, you know, two by sixteen, I think, um, four by eight, or whatever, it's, it's small, um, but waiting until, so then, they will have enough ground cover to do it when the town finishes with the distribution of Dick Street. I think you might remember, you found this last time, that this house was granted a variance based on the, um, extension of Dick Street, which was, um, all of Dick Street was eliminated in a land court case back in nineteen ninety-five, except for this little nub, which was accidentally left off because it was part registered land and part unregistered land, and the unregistered land, uh, piece, which is only twenty by forty, was, was left, um, not distributed to the neighbors. And the town is now in the process of fixing that through the yard sale program that's been approved by town meeting, it's been taken, and it's going through the process. Uh, as I think you might know, that process takes about, you know, eight months for a year to happen. My client is seeking a variance to go over ground cover by thirty point, uh, two percent. If they don't get the relief, and they don't fill that, uh, bump out, they're at twenty-nine point eight percent. So, we're only talking about, you know, a, a variation here of point oh two percent, uh, of point two percent of, which is sixteen square feet. It's a nominal and indecipherable amount of square footage to, uh, anyone in the neighborhood, but it's significant cost and burden on my client if they were to try and do it later, because the foundation is already gonna be in, the walls are already gonna be out, the electrical's already gonna be down, the floor's already gonna be down. You know, trying to put this on later would be a much more expensive, a much more burdensome task than it is now. The yard sale program, I don't know, I'm familiar with it, but essentially the town does the program, so that if you are the abutter, you automatically win. And in this case, my client is the only abutter, because it, uh, because of the shape of the lot. The letters filed from Serena, so they're butter on the other side, um, suggest that they had opposed this, and I just wanna really clarify that if you read the letter, and I've talked to Mr. Serena since, that they actually don't oppose it, they actually think it's okay. They just wanted to clarify that my client should not try to make some kind of move to get both sides of it. They said they oppose it, and they say they're okay with it as long as they get their side and my client gets his side, um, which is what the, uh, town intends to do, to cut it in half and parcel it into two pieces. Um, so there's no opposition to what my client is proposing, and there was just a misunderstanding by Mr. Serena, which is, which is actually clarified in the letter. Um, and when you show, when you look at what we're proposing. So, this lot has already received a variance with essentially the same issue, and we seek a variance now to take that, that same issue and transfer it to the ground cover. If the, when, if a variance is granted and the construction is done, and after the yard sale, my client's ground cover would be, uh, twenty-eight, seven-nine, I think, twenty-seven, nine, so he would be, you know, well below, um, the allowed ground cover within a year, or whenever the yard sale takes place. And if he's over, it's only over by point two percent.
In the event the yard sale didn't take that, how?
Something like that. So the variance is worth point two percent.
Okay, you said, finished?
Yeah.
Uh, comments?
When, um, what was this given a variance for?
Um, the, uh, file out requires that if you have a lot that has both roads on both sides, that you count both sides as front yard step backs, so, which is actually the side yard, which has a plot that's that back actually has a ten yard, a ten foot side yard step back, and this board recognized that this nub of Dick Street didn't make any sense to count that they wrote it, and granted a five foot, uh, step back to that portion.
It's not in all zoning districts.
No.
No, it's only in some zoning areas.
And Stephen, you had told us that this process has started on Dick Street?
That's right.
It's gone through town meeting?
That's right.
And the surveyor is working on getting the plan? What, what state is it now?
It's in the taking process, MDM and SMA, people inside of town, and, uh, I don't know if it's finished, I think it's already finished, but it's one of the intermittently issues. The plan is already missed us. So, there's a sixty or ninety day period where you go through the taking, and then they do the, our, and these, and these, the bid process, and then the acting. So it only takes thirty or sixty days to let happen, but they don't do it as soon as the trade is with, when they have the thousand, or wherever it's going on. And they don't know if, uh, there's more details, I think two thousand.
No, you're correct, I'm somewhat involved with this, but, um, this was approved by, I mean, twenty-twelve.
Yeah.
Statement, and I, it's just a process of going through all these taking, giving the reporters, you know, there's a line of them.
Yeah.
And Dick Street is definitely in line, I talked to Andrew about this, there's no doubt that the owner of sixty-two Walsh, sixty-four Walsh, would have been tried to push the people to the parcels that they left their lot, which is why sixty-four, Law Creek, and Constance, I can be, just verify, and that is, he is in favor of this.
Um, the process is mostly being held up potentially that when John quits, uh, and the job is empty for a year, they have this huge backlog that Eleanor is working vigorously to, uh, to clear, but I don't want to suggest that the town is taking too long.
Okay, but you just did.
Put a blame down.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not, I'm caught by the lack of staffing, not by the current...
Comments?
Just out of curiosity, do you think of any reasons why this zoning should only apply to a few zoning districts?
We, we do.
In, in terms of maintaining a setback from both roads?
Well, that's, that's not what we're here, I was gonna say, that was for the last one.
It's stupid.
Huh?
I think it's stupid.
Well, well, either you're gonna do it for the whole island, or you're not.
I, I agree with you, I think that the application is to zoning districts that have small, that are more dense, where you could set a hut very close to the road, and then once you get into a bigger area, whether side yard step backs is large, larger anyway, it becomes less of an issue, is my guess. But I tend to agree with you, I'm going to record that I think this is typical.
I think it's kind of the issue, it's an all-in, or see if it looks...
I have a more practical question. Ungrounded bays do not count as ground cover. Why do you need a floor in this bay?
We're back to the bay, I know this question.
You can have that bay, you, you can have a platform that's eighteen inch higher than the floor, or any facsimile that Marcus will approve, as long as there's not a floor system in it, and it doesn't count as ground cover. So why wouldn't you do that, instead of asking us for a variance?
I assume because they want a floor in it.
Well, okay.
Mr. Warren is right, and I just got that with my mind, and the response was that they want a floor, and they're gonna do it anyway, but if they have to wait a year, then it's a significant burden, and they would rather do it all at once.
I mean, my, my inclination is you wait the year, and, you know, and, I mean, I've been involved in projects where, yeah, I would have liked to have started before the yard sale was over, but you wait, but having said this...
I mean, having said that, we already granted them the ability to go forward with the rest of it, right?
But this is a ground cover.
Well, that was a different, slightly different.
We're allowing them to exceed allowable ground cover on the lot, and there is no hardship in my mind.
Right, conditional on the purchase of...
Yeah, but you don't get the, you don't, for some reason, you get the law.
Right, right, yeah, or they decide, well, we got what we wanted, why do we wanna spend another five or ten grand on it?
Five grand, no one can use it anyway, we don't really need it anymore.
Well, I'd certainly be willing to have a negative condition on, uh, the insurance, the CIO condition on, um, the, uh, ground cover being under, going at the time of the issuance, if we have to, if my client can not, uh, get, does not get the land, and then have to remove or remediate the, the problem.
That is not, I mean, well, that's gonna be a big expense for them, too.
We could hedge.
That would be the hardship.
Well, that's what he's asking us to do.
Right, and then they come back and say...
We could hedge and say, okay, you can have... We could hedge and say, okay, you can have, you can do what you want to do, but you can't utilize, what'd you say, the final, if it gets twenty-seven point...
I think it's twenty-seven nine.
Twenty-seven nine.
If you made it conditions that the final, uh, the issuance of the COB condition on the ground cover being under thirty percent, uh, then they have to get the land, or they have to remove it. Um, I take that for granted.
What were you gonna say, that they were gonna...
Yeah, just live at twenty-seven, twenty-nine. And I mean, this is a very generous offer, but...
Oh, yeah, they might find it's taken enough, but I would, I would take that condition, that the, the issuance of the COB condition on being under thirty percent at that time.
Well, that's not what Michael was saying. Michael was saying, limiting you to twenty-seven point nine percent period, end of discussion.
If, if he, yeah.
If he took the deal.
If he takes.
That's what I was, Michael was saying, yeah.
I mean, creating a...
Yes.
Future ground cover?
Yes.
For, for his map.
It's a hedge.
It's basically.
Oh, man!
We're talking hedging.
I know.
What this was all about, that's so...
I was gonna clean it up, actually, what?
So if you're so confident of everything, yeah...
No, I'm com- I'm, I'm confident that...
You're giving something up there, yeah.
Yeah.
But we're also, I think, I think Michael's saying that we would go below what's allowed under, under zoning, we need to come back for relief just to get to thirty percent if they ever wanted to do a shed or something. I mean, there's really no...
Not a shed they could do.
This is another, this is the same thing we have with another application before us. We heard last month or the month before.
Dionis.
Yeah, Dionis, they're waiting for the, waiting for the yard sale, bro.
Yeah.
You know, we're, we're not inclined to...
You said...
Yeah, that was you too, wasn't it?
That was you.
Well, yeah.
I, I knew you were gonna block out Mr. Serena, but I'm not your fellow, but...
I could go with somewhere with that, but I'm not going to.
I think you should do the eighteen inches or whatever the heck Mark suggested.
No, they can go the whole thirty-two square feet without a floor in it, and they're not before us on this matter.
Well, or if they're so confident in doing it, they can just go ahead and...
They need a variance from us, though, I don't really know what the hardship is.
Yeah, I, I, I'm inclined to say you should, should wait, but...
I think the hardship, although it's not, you know, lighter, is definitely disproportionate to do variance if being thought of point two percent.
I wouldn't disagree with you.
Well, there is no hardship.
Our zoning bylaw doesn't look at it and say that, it says you need to prove a hardship.
I mean, they're saying the har- I mean, the hardship is gonna cost them more if they have to bring somebody back.
If they do the, you know, we do the floor, we do the electrical, we do the wall.
Well, my point is, Steve, that, you know, ten to one, I mean, within reason, you, if you have HCC approval, well, no, I can't go there, nevermind.
No, don't even.
It's up to you, but I don't think it's a hardship to have to wait, I mean, a lot of people wait till the yard sale is over to get their extra bedroom or something like that.
I mean, in this case, they're really, it was, they're in construction now, it's not, they had a house and they just have to wait, and waiting's not a hardship, the issue is that doing it while it's for a frame compared to doing it when it's finished.
If I drove by this, I think, this afternoon, and it's, it's a plywood shell, correct? There are no windows in it, there's not...
Yeah, that sounds right.
They got time, there's time in that project. So I'm not feeling, you know, the more I think about it...
And you're here now, after the building permit's been issued, and, wait a minute, the building permit's been issued, it couldn't have been issued over ground cover.
No, 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 no.
They wanna add...
They wanna add the bay to the permit.
I think you're right.
By the time you, you know, this goes through, and, you know, when do you realistically hope for that process, you know, yard sale generally under a, a year, when did it start on this particular piece of...
That's what they said, right?
Yeah, the, the problem is...
So it's coming up?
Well, no, the year for maybe we would have taken it, they do the taking, then they do the RP, and then town also has to draft the commission documents for each of those takes pretty much, like, you know, so, um, the year is not when it's happening, it's a year from when it actually gets, or out of the pen.
And it's out of the pen.
It's, it's in the, it's in the herd right now.
I mean, I was involved with one where it all happened within the course of the building project, wasn't exactly the same, but, I don't know, let's move on.
I mean, couldn't they do that last?
But let's, uh, I think we need to, we need to blow the air in our heads somehow, so we can go home.
Um...
So, somebody should, Michael, what's your thought? Let's take a, let's take a free, let's, let's follow each other.
I, I'm not, I'm not a favorer of it.
Under any conditions?
Correct.
Michael?
I could vote yes, if they're willing to continue with, with their acquisition of the yard sale lot, assuming they require, kind of, if they put up the trailer and quiet it, and then, and then make it twenty-seven, twenty-nine.
Okay.
I like Michael's idea, but then if they're limited to twenty-seven point nine, they're just gonna come back.
Well, only if they want something more.
There's not really any space left on the lot, not that's what I'm thinking.
Mark?
I could, I, I could see it in Michael's voice.
I could see it in Michael's voice.
It's a little unusual.
It's a little, yeah, but they're asking for something that's, that I wouldn't embrace without something being quite, quote, quote, problem on this thing.
So they gotta live with the twenty-seven point nine, and it's all...
And that will be reflected in the decision, that the reason they got the...
Go ahead.
The decision is...
They're giving up two point one percent.
Twenty-seven point nine.
Not to get crazy, but could we go to twenty-eight?
Twenty-eight, twenty-eight is fine.
Give us a little, a little breather, bro.
Twenty-eight is fine with me.
That's fine.
Twenty-eight, I'll give it up.
So are you, is that okay with you, if we do that? I mean, are you gonna...
I would take it in the, I would take it over a no, and then my client wants to exercise that it'll be there, there.
There, right.
Okay.
Yeah, and then, yeah.
And that'll be reflected in the decision, why we agree to it.
I'm fine with twenty-eight, I don't know if anybody else will buy it.
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, it's good.
What's the CO being issued?
Yeah, the CO is...
Only in this circumstance.
Yeah, you don't...
Under ground cover, on the lot.
He, the CO wouldn't be issued...
Well, it would be if you had a variance.
It would be issued with a variance, so...
But if you wanna make it a condition, I, I think if we go to, well, with the twenty-eight percent built in, anyway, it's mainly what you get.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it, it can't be over twenty-eight percent, so they couldn't go in and get a building, a CO, until they get this...
Until they met that requirement.
Dick Street parceling.
Right.
Yeah.
Right?
They can't get a CO until the Dick Street parceling.
They can meet the standard of the variance.
I mean, I think we can be explicit about that, too.
Yeah.
Well, let's, let me just think about that for a second. If the town slows down in their program, the YSL program, and Mr. Cohen's, my builder speeds up, that project could be done by before his client is eligible to acquire that piece of property.
It'd be...
Yeah, it just doesn't get a CO. It can get sign off on it.
I mean, he has, he's taking calculated risks, that by doing this, it'll all happen.
I mean, I, I'd love to do another way, but I think that's your challenge, it's more to do it.
Yeah. All right, because of that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, was that a motion, Michael?
I'll second.
Mark seconded. Okay, anybody in the audience? No? All, any further discussion, all who've been favored, say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose? One. Okay, thank you. All right.
No.
No, we have two more. Uh, well, and then...
We have three, right?
Maybe we have to go back to Doll Island, or we're gonna talk, we'll all talk about Reserve Act LLC, fifty-nine deaths, fourteen, fifteen meter street, for the applicant.
Sarah, I'll go for the applicant. I'm here to ask for, to substitute, um, an exhibit plan to the prior, um, granted decision that you granted last March, March twenty-seventh. Um, what happened with this project is, after we were here in March, um, they continued to go through the HDC process, moving the buildings around, um, and the buildings did not end up being reduced as much as we thought they were going to be, so that the existing ground cover, which is thirty-six point two percent, we had thought was going to go down to about twenty-nine point nine-three percent, ended up being reduced to thirty-two point eight percent. In the meantime, the zoning changed for our zoning districts, we're now in an ROH zone, which allows fifty percent ground cover, so our property is completely conforming dimensionally, ground cover wise, our non-conform, remaining non-conformities are the five pre-existing buildings and the, um, unusual parking curb cut configuration.
Five or four?
It's four, five structures going to four.
Oh, got it.
And the plan that we gave you, I think, has, it has existing and a new proposed site plan. I suppose I could have also given you the intermediary one that you had approved.
It's on the same, three twelve, right?
What page is that?
That is on.
Are they on the same one? Oh, no, that's existing.
Yeah, the one that's on the same one is existing.
It's on, it's like three twelve or something?
Yeah, the existing and the proposed are on the same.
Three nineteen.
Yeah, no, existing, well, what did we approve before?
Three nineteen is this one, if you compare those.
Oh, so there just should be some notation about the ground cover? What, what changed, Sarah?
Just the, just the ground cover.
I mean, literally, there's some notation here about it, or what would change on the, you're just submitting a new plan?
I'm just completely submitting a new plan.
Good.
And the zoning district changed after your last, that...
Right, and we were at, existing is thirty-six point two percent, so we're a pre-existing, we were pre-existing non-conforming as to ground cover, we were becoming conforming as to ground cover, because we were dropping just below the thirty. Then I thought we were going to still be pre-existing non-conforming and just become less non-conforming, and then they changed the zoning district, and we became conforming.
So you're only changing the little notation where it says zone, ROH now, with its table?
No, and we've changed the size of the buildings. The buildings have changed.
Oh, I see what you're saying, now, okay.
But they look the same shape.
They're the same face of shame.
They're just slightly bigger than your proposed.
They're just slightly bigger, correct. We went from...
I got it, so, like Cottage C, what was it before, five forty now?
We would have had two thousand one hundred and seventy-eight square feet as approved, we're now asking for two thousand three eighty-eight.
But it's all conforming.
But it's all conforming, we're bringing all the setbacks into conformity. Before, we were non-conforming as to front yard setback, but now we're conforming as to front yard setback.
So we just need to, what, make a motion to...
Accept the new...
Accept the new exhibit A? Does it, do we have to make any changes to the body of the decision, because of the changes?
Um, I think we should, we, all, from the department configuration to address, the number of structures that address some use, which remain pre-existing non-conforming, department of two purpose, all of that.
Correct.
Really just swap out one, like, nine or eleven.
And note, and note the larger ground cover in the new zoning district.
I don't wanna be laboring the point, but why do you even have to note the new total ground cover if it's compliant?
Right, right, four, four buildings.
Because of the past four buildings?
Because Marcus, I tried to just do this, and Marcus took the position that because we're a pre-existing non-conforming use, that it's, and that because the ground cover is getting slightly bigger, that that's an expansion of the non-conforming use. I completely and totally disagree with him, I really don't wanna get into that, I, I was gonna appeal him, and then I just thought, it's just so much easier to come in and swap out the...
But now it doesn't really matter, because you're conforming anyway with the zoning change, right?
But in his mind, we're expanding a pre-existing non-conforming use.
Oh, right, because of four buildings, right.
Because the use is these four separate cottages, and now each cottage is getting slightly bigger.
I mean, are you adding bedroom space and whatnot?
I don't think, no, I think it's just a little ground co- I mean, no, because the ground cover went from three thousand, whatever it was, it only went up like two hundred square feet.
So we are blessing the actual number, I'm good with it, two hundred feet, Michael?
I think it's really simple.
Okay, then let's move on.
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve the new exhibit.
On A, is it, will we do the red?
I think so, yeah, right?
It is.
It is. Okay.
I'll second.
We should go, make the motion, Susan second, any further discussion? No, all who've been favored, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so, let's just go to Georgia Marie Frazza.
What about the Skull Island?
Well, we'll go back to it.
Oh, okay.
But Sarah's here, so...
Oh, right, okay, sorry.
Um, that's all right. So, yes, the Frazza's, this isn't a applic- well, request for an emergency, um, permit, and I'm gonna be coming back with a full-blown application for December. Um, the Frazza property is on Sheep Pond Road, it's currently hanging, I think it's got, it's lost since even this plan was done, we've lost an additional six to nine feet, so I think we only have about three feet. Um, Tuscan is about to pick it up and move it just temporarily back, I think the building department is cooperating and giving us approval to do that, and we were before the county last week, and were granted, um, a license to put the building into the unused portion of Sheep, Sheep Pond Road.
Mm-hmm.
And at their request, we had to amend our proposed plan, so I just wanna show it to you, because they, they wanted to maintain vehicular access down to the water on that portion of Sheep Pond Road, that it used to go to the Ratner property, that now isn't there anymore.
Where'd they get it?
They're putting it in the road.
I understand what happened.
Oh, sorry.
So that, that road will still be passable?
But this sand road will not?
Yes, it will, remove the building.
Oh.
Where'd they go with it after?
Two left, twelve foot.
Oh, I see, and what's in here?
Where'd they go with it after?
Uh, well, here's no after.
How long would it last, do they say?
I think this is a fence line, it's, it's...
No, it's, yeah, because the countyway is changing, I had to put twelve feet here, so that, I don't know where people would be driving to, because we had...
The water's certainly making...
Yeah, well, I don't know, it's...
Where are you putting it?
Well, yeah, it exists, it's not a public... They're on the verge of falling in, so it must be, the, the bank must be for the back.
It's the way the bank is coming, it's coming at an angle, so it's cutting off where the existing houses are coming towards them, so...
So this line isn't the current top of the bank?
It was current...
I don't know, it says November tenth.
It was current on November tenth, but then there was a big storm, and they lost six to nine feet more, so it's...
So it's not like it's hanging over the edge?
Pretty close.
No, it's about three feet.
Oh, three feet off?
Yeah.
Cause it was colder, right?
Yeah, over here is that. Cause it's coming, it's coming, it's coming this way. Yeah. So, so.
So the sand road, they're gonna, it's gonna be, they're gonna, the sand road's gonna kinda move over?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
I would consider this an emergency.
I agree.
I would consider this an emergency.
I, I will be back in December for the fall.
Yes, I'm, is there any other? Yeah, Mr. Chairman, are you ready for a motion?
Can you be back there?
Mr. Chairman, are you ready for a motion?
I am, sir.
I move that we grant the relief as requested. No building between, uh.
It won't be, won't be moved before then anyway.
Okay, Michael, uh, the two Michaels, move in a second. So, any further discussion? No, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. So, moving on. Are you, Mr. Stover?
No.
No?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
He's upstairs, I think. Should I go get?
He is?
One of his guys can't live over in this closet on 13th Street. I know he's got the whole, uh, building across the street. He's been elected, submitted a letter.
I think you're looking for the HDC.
Up here.
Upstairs.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
But I saw him, he was saying he was going to clean places, trying to get HCC approval.
Well, I've not seen, I don't know Izzy. I haven't seen Izzy.
I haven't seen him.
He hasn't poked in yet.
He's not been in.
Nothing, I saw him, he was wearing a, a daily construction jacket with big glasses, and he was sitting in here for a while, and then wearing upstairs.
I was in Stover. Stover doesn't wear glasses.
Do you know the guy that I mean? He was sitting at the table when Rota was up there. He was wearing big glasses and curly gray hair.
Okay, yeah.
If not.
All right. Is there any other business? Do we need to talk about that schedule?
You need to approve it.
Okay, so everybody go to the last, uh, go to the last page.
Bye, Sarah.
Bye, Sarah.
Bye, Sarah.
Uh, so these are the meeting dates.
It always looks fun.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, it's still the second Thursday, right? Every, yeah.
March at nine might be a little.
We don't think it might be. March twelfth. Isn't it? But other ones are filing.
Maybe February. I don't know.
I will be.
I will be gone in January.
I will as well.
Okay, well, then we're beginning to have a problem. But we can address it.
I mean, it's the baby's late idea, but I.
No, you're not.
Detention.
So is three people out in January?
I'm pretty sure I'll be here, but.
I mean, it's like right on my due date, so.
Are you going to Wednesday?
It could make the union very excited.
Oh, my God.
Are you gonna be Friday?
On Thursday.
Oh.
We can get out, that's the point of it.
Yeah, well, if enough of us aren't gonna be here.
I mean, I'm pretty sure the room's available, but why don't we, um, go to, after Kate, if that's where she's available.
So after the date on that, I'll, that would be.
Are you moving to that?
We're talking January, so the fifteenth.
All right, well, what is?
He thought, he, he admitted that you guys gave him some sort of a, an approval.
Is he Stover, though?
No, the guy that was wearing a daily construction jacket.
We can get anything unless he was here for another project.
He was trying to get it approved upstairs, I thought.
The deck?
I just, I don't know. Never mind. I'm not.
No, I.
I don't think it's the right thing, cause I've been looking for him so we could.
I don't know.
I haven't seen him.
Uh, so let's not discuss that one unless we're gonna open it. Hmm. I think we continue it. I think we should do a representation.
Uh, is this Skull Island?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Especially if, if somebody is questioned, if you see that's a question.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay?
Yeah.
So we're not open it. So, so January eighth, we know Michael and Lisa aren't going to be here. We don't know about Jeff, um, or Kieran.
But I certainly won't be there, so that's.
Oh, and you won't be. That's three. So, yeah, that's not, that's too many.
We need to go to the other season.
Yeah.
So Michael.
He'll be back.
Will be back.
I'll, I'll come back.
I'll be back. I'm only.
I'll make a trip back to the fifteenth.
Are you going like last year?
No, but I was gonna stay for three weeks. I'll come back.
When is Elizabeth gonna have her baby?
Three, for now?
Yeah, it's very good. Who's that?
Three. That's exciting.
Wow, you really dreamed of it.
Oh, is that where you're going? I didn't know that. Cool.
Okay, I will get back to you about the availability thing right fifteen. If the room is not available.
What, January fifteenth?
Yes.
I'm not gonna be here.
But I'll be, I'll be back.
But Susan won't.
Well, we don't know about Jeff.
Where, when are you around, Michael?
I'm just, I'm just looking. I'm, I'm here on the eighth. But I'm departing on the, uh.
Lincoln's birthday is fourteen, a holiday.
You're departing on the fourteenth?
Fourteenth.
That's February.
Back on Island the night of the twentieth.
So arguably the thirteenth?
Yeah.
Well, the reason I asked.
Get off the air, Stan.
February the twelfth?
No, it's President's Day, but that's like the twenty-third of February.
I'm sorry, Michael. You said you were leaving the fourteenth. I meant two days. And then it's twelve, the twelfth of January?
Monday, Monday, the twelfth.
On the twelfth?
I was gonna back, seeing flights out of Boston, send down.
How about Friday?
I'm gone on the fourteenth, day of the twentieth.
No, would you be back for the twelfth?
I'll come back, I'll come back.
At the end?
Yeah.
And not go back?
No, we thought you were gonna come back if we needed it.
I am.
Oh, then we're gonna go back then?
No.
All right, let's continue to work on this. Um, I don't know if we're gonna solve it now, but, uh.
Well, why doesn't everybody look at their calendars and email the days they're available around that week and then pull on it has the most?
Well, it sounds like, well, two, we'd be missing two almost any time except for the eighth, and at this point, we'd be missing three.
Well, we also kinda need to know what Jeff and Karen.
Yeah. I hate giving Karen the opportunity to say he won't be here.
So we wanna continue this next month, and you all can get back to me about, take, take it with you, obviously, and double check your calendars to see about availability and anytime you have less than.
And then you, then you can look and see when it's available, too.
I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Maybe we'll have any.
No meetings.
Okay. I feel like it's gonna, this is, it's not.
You have forty-five more minutes of light.
I like light.
Have you made a motion to adjourn?
All right. Did someone make a motion to adjourn?
I will.
Awesome. Oh, whatever.
It was a compliment.
I don't care.
You were being so nice.
I didn't think I'd think.
You guys are being nice.
Yes. You were being so nice, and I, I thought.
I don't think Arthur thought I was being.
No, this is.
Yeah, so you're playing a big one.
No, it's not the big one. It's a bigger one. Okay. No, it's a new book. Okay. Well, I think it's.
There's a couple of them. Yeah, I'm.
Oh, I think, what else? I could be nine months, which definitely.
No, it's just how much you want to.
I still feel like I'm pregnant, and he's around me for three and a half years.
I'm so tired of that first opposition.
I know, I'm tired of that.
I'm still in time. No, I'm good. I got time.
Um, yeah, that was.